This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All the meeting to order, Select Board, we're ready to roll. We'll get the attention of our folks at the major headquarters here. There we go. All right. Good. Calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And could we please start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Well, nice to see a crowd here tonight. Many familiar faces that we can actually recognize now and then without a mask on for change and enjoy the good weather that we've been having for the last day or two, too. So we have a pretty busy agenda tonight. Everything always doesn't look that complicated and full, but I know it will be. So hopefully we have some very good discussion and we'll start off, we don't have any public hearings, but we do have open time for the public and we'll take a first one, but we have another person to come as well. So go ahead, Tammy.
Tammy Alunis, 298 College Highway. Madam Chair, I'm hoping you can answer this for me. We had a town accountant that's contract was canceled, was not renewed by the Select Board, and we had no replacement come in for quite a while. Thousands of dollars spent trying to do a fiscal year close, an audit, and now we're trying to get a three-year contract with someone, but they know our stuff is so far behind that they've jacked up the prices. Now we have a town-elect position that's going to be open and contract is un, un, no discussion on it because it's a town-elect person and...
I don't know that we have anything totally open at this point in time.
But I'm curious as to, to entice somebody to come back, how are you going to get the money when they've already tried to have an increase for their pay? It seems like anybody that has a contract, they are getting bonuses. The females in the group are not. And it just seems like several people are not being represented. And I'm wondering how long it's going to take to replace this other person and what it's gonna, how it's gonna affect this town again going through that.
It's something that we need to have on our agenda to discuss, which is not on the agenda for tonight. We obviously have got various budget considerations that we're putting forward for the FinCon meetings that will be coming up to talk about what we want in our town budget. One of the priorities that we've made is to try and get more competitive salaries in place across the board so that we can not only attract but retain qualified personnel. And that still remains a high priority. So with that, that's about all I can tell you. I don't have an answer for anything tonight.
I know there's only two elected officials, and I don't want to get into names that draw compensation from the town. To my knowledge, as a sitting board dislike man, I have not received any notice from the town clerk that a notice of resignation has been submitted and recorded by the town clerk. That would have to be the first step to even, because otherwise I have no idea. I mean, I think I can guess what you're talking about because it's a small town.
Yeah.
But until that first step actually happens.
Right. But then again, it's relying on a motion at a town meeting for the, for any
It's gonna be part of our budget discussions in terms of how we can look at salaries across the board, not just for one or two positions. We tried last year to up some salaries across the board, to take the lowest paid people on the scale and move them up. We made some adjustments. We couldn't get all the way that we wanted.
But those weren't town-elect people.
But that doesn't matter. It's a town employee that we're trying to look at in general. I'm not trying to make, I'm not trying to make a distinction between appointed versus elected.
Plus, I would just, I would just note, elected officials' salaries can only be changed by a town vote.
Correct.
Correct.
So we have to follow by laws.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to move on. Okay. So, thank you, Tammy. So, please, welcome to Southampton. This is our...
Well, thank you, Select Board.
I'll let you do your own interruption, interruption, yeah, introduction. There we go, introduction. But welcome to Southampton. And I think this may be your, your first time at Town Hall, so welcome. And certainly your first time, I think, meeting the Select Board, so.
Yes, absolutely. And I appreciate the...
So we'll let you introduce yourself.
Yep. I am State Representative Kelly Pease for the 4th Hampton District, which is currently just Westfield. As of November, with redistricting, it is Westfield and Southampton. So if I'm fortunate enough to be re-elected, then I will be your representative come to Northampton. And actually, Representative Sabados and I have kind of already had an understanding where she's looking to me to pick it up so I can get to know the people of Southampton and understand, of course, she's still there to support whatever's going on. So, so we're going to work in a team, at least until after the election, and then it's going to be, hopefully, only mine. So I'm going to give you a quick background on me. Like I told you, I started, I was born in Westfield, grew up in a small town of Chester. I was on the Select Board for three years, but then I did 20 years in the Army. And then after retiring, I moved back. And for some strange reason, I decided I'd run for State Representative when the seat became open. So I've been just doing it since I ran during 2020. I was elected in 2020, so I've just been in the position for not even a year and a half. So this November will be my two-year mark of being elected. And that's pretty much it. I'm a fiscal conservative, and my, my main campaign theme is more money for roads and schools for the communities because that's what kills most cities and towns. That's what raises taxes and causes you to raise the property taxes because that's what you, one of your biggest budget items and one of your biggest complaints, obviously, with roads. So that's what I fight for, and that's, and that's kind of what I'm about. I'm pretty simple. They don't need to raise taxes to get us there. We got enough money. They need to prioritize their spending. And that's what I try to advocate for down at the State House. So that's kind of me in a nutshell. I can answer any question you want.
Yeah.
And as a side note, I was a child actor when I was a kid, and I did a bunch of TV commercials, and I have a pension plan with Screen Actors Guild, but that's just a side note. So, but anyways, it's a pleasure to get to know you.
Yeah.
I've given you all my cards with my personal cell phone number on it. So if you have an issue that comes up, you need help passing a local ordinance that needs to go through the State House, reach out with me, to reach out to me. And I work, I work very closely right now with Senator Velez, who I'm sure you'll be seeing more of because he's kind of been a COVID senator, too, because he hasn't been able to get out much because with his new district, because he got elected during COVID as well. But, but, but we work well together. So anything you need, we work as a team for Westfield and hopefully now Southampton.
Great. Wonderful. Thanks for coming. Yeah, I'm sure we've got a few comments or questions. I think at some point, we'd like to have you back for a real kind of legislative briefing, but you know, that wasn't sort of on the, on the schedule for tonight as part of this. I mean, I think we probably have a few thoughts that we might share with you if we would like to do that. Really, go ahead.
I want to say hi. I'm Maureen Groden. I'm on the Select Board. This is my fifth year. I just want to thank you for your service. Both of our state rep and senators are veterans, which, so I just appreciate your service. And I also wanted to say that I hope that, including with roads and schools, would be unfunded mandates from the state.
Oh, you're preaching to the choir on that.
We have to redistrict. We're not given any money to do it. I mean, one after another. We just have, you know, regional transportation, you know, it affects us in the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars over the years where we were promised 100% reimbursement for regional transportation. And we're lucky if we get 60%.
And you're talking school money, regional, right?
So I hope that's included on the school calendar.
Okay. No, that's, that's good. And I am all about unfunded mandates. I, that was, as a matter of fact, when I used to campaign and go knocking on doors, I used to ask teachers, like, I don't want to know what your union wants, you know? And I talked to a principal, and I'm like, I want to know what you need. And she goes, unfunded mandates are killing me. You know, she was a principal at an elementary school, and she goes, that's what kills us. I mean, they put something in, they might fund it for a couple of years, the funding goes away, and we can't afford to keep the position, but we're required to. And it's, it's killing us. So I totally understand that.
Thank you.
Great. Other thoughts? Anybody?
I think, sorry, I think the, it'd be curious from this end to see where you guys finally end up with all the extra, the one-time money that the state is, is sitting on for infrastructure. You know, just with the town itself, public safety, potential council on aging and infrastructure, infrastructure costs within the town that, in your opening statements, I mean, if we could, we'd just pass a $20 million override on citizens, but it's never going to fly.
No, and I totally understand that.
In the meanwhile, we're in 200-year-old police station and fire department. They used to be one of the first schools. And I know that, I think, hopefully, we'll also be sending down home rule petitions to change some of our alcohol licenses that we would look for, once passed by the town.
Absolutely. Those are exactly the things that myself and the Senator can help with. We can get those through.
I think we haven't heard much yet about the infrastructure bill, just to tag onto what John said. Money's coming for the, for the new infrastructure bill, but not a whole lot of direction has been given out yet, to my knowledge, anyway.
Right. There is, there is money available. I mean, we just passed a, the governor submitted a surplus budget for the, for 2022. Before we get into next month, we'll be taking up his budget for 2023. And that was 1.6 billion. It had a lot of money in there across the board. And I can get, I can send out more details on exactly what I included, but we got to wait a little while on that because it went to the Senate. They're going to take their cut at it. Then it's got to go to a conference committee, and then it's got to go to the governor for signature. So we can't get too ahead of ourselves. I will say that, again, the, the road money, there was 100 million that we passed. Now typically, the Chapter 90 funding is funded about 200 million a year, which is probably about at least half of what it needs to be. Because I'm not sure about the Southampton budget yet, but I know in Westfield, we get like 1.2 million, but it would be about 4 million to keep up with the amount of roads we have to keep them decent. And so they did, he did put an extra 100 million into, for winter repair pothole stuff. And that's going to be based on road miles, which I think works better for us in Washington, Massachusetts than the Chapter 90 formula. There was also, he had in there another 100,000 just for Chapter 90 funding to bump it up. And they, the House took that out. I mean, actually, I put in an amendment to put it back in, but it did not get passed. I don't know how any representative could vote against roads because I don't know how their constituents don't talk to them like my constituents do. Fix our roads. That's all we hear, you know? But anyways, we can get more details. Is that budget, the new supplemental and some of the old ARPA stuff, if that's your questions, you can, you know, you can have, you can email, Ed can send an email with whatever specific questions you have, say what, or you guys can, you know? But I, but if, if you're all on the email, then I'll respond and give you the details. We'll research exactly what you're looking for and provide that information. That's what we're here for, to represent you. That's my job.
I think just as a follow-up to, to the road issue, two things that come to my mind would be just to be sure that we're on the radar screen in terms of DOT and the tip. Right now, we've got two things that are really high priorities for us, which is our, completing the, the middle section of the Greenway for Southampton. As you know, East Hampton and Westfield are, are at both ends of us, and we've got the three and a half miles in, in between. We've gotten some grants to do the acquisition of the actual rail corridor. We've put out a grant for, put in a grant for some initial design money, and there is some tip money waiting for us for the actual construction. But we want to be sure that that stays in place and maybe can even increase because it probably is not enough, given that that's been there for, what, probably about four years now?
6 million.
It's around $6 million for the construction, but I'm sure that figure is not, not adequate at the present time.
No, I'm sure.
And then the other thing that we have ongoing is the East Street Bridge construction, which is underway right now. But then we are looking at a redoing of the East Street itself, which is a main corridor over to both East Hampton and Hoyok. So leaving from both Route 10, right across the street, essentially going down to the bridge as one section of it, and then the other side of the bridge over to the county line. So those are two things that are in process with, with DOT getting on their tip, tip screen and being sure that it stays there with adequate funding. So those would be things I would just ask you to keep your eye on for us in particular.
East Street's on for 2025, 5 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
4, 4, 9.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and if, and Mr. Gibson could, I mean, he's already sent me a good little breakdown of the Greenway stuff, but obviously the concerns about the tip, if you want to follow up with that, then we can, then we can follow up with that.
Take a ride on East Street, hon.
Yeah. When you talk about a few potholes, you'll find them.
It's a major corridor, east-west corridor in Southampton, one of two.
Yeah. Well, and you know, and that's, that's one of the problems with the Chapter 90 money. It's like, it's, you're, it's, you know, based on the formula, road miles and stuff, but also like employment. I was out sitting over here at the little strip mall collecting some signatures for my nomination papers today, and it's amazing how many people travel just through here, you know? Might not work here, but transverse, whether from East Hampton, from Westfield, from Chesterfield. I mean, I met a whole bunch of people that weren't Southampton people. They were just coming through, you know? I mean, so you get a lot of wear and tear on your miles. It doesn't get captured in that formulating, you know?
Absolutely. Yeah. Good. Any other comments, questions? Anybody? No?
Well, please.
If not, we really appreciate your coming by and getting to meet you, and we'll be in touch, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'll let you get out with your, your business. And you have my contact?
Yeah.
And please, any question, and if there's really a pressing issue, you have my cell phone call anytime.
Yeah. But I think, you know, just even, even having us on a, if you have a newsletter, a regular newsletter or something like that, I mean, just having us on your, on your newsletter list, that would be great so we can keep up to date, too, with what's happening in Boston and kind of what's...
Are you on Senator Velez's?
I don't know if all of us are. Some of us are, I'm sure. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And I just want to mention, I believe you set a regular appointment schedule that you'll be meeting residents at the COA once a month?
Right. I just, I just...
Just for the COA, but for the community?
Right. That's a, that's a, yep, a starting point there. I just set that up now that they're coming out more, more comfortable after COVID. I just set up monthly meetings here at your Council on Aging for any residents come in and also in Westfield as well. But I also set it up, if you have other areas out here you think I should go to, please let me know. Like, I'm setting up at like our Liberty Manor over in Westfield, which is a retirement community. And I'm going to go to their little community center and meet with them. I don't know if that'll be a regular occurrence, but, all right?
Good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Yep. Yes. One more. Robert?
Hi there.
Hi.
Welcome. Robert Floyd, College Highway. Greetings.
Can you fix the mic, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Floyd, College Highway. I'm speaking as town moderator. We have a town meeting in seven weeks. And if you were to meet in two weeks from tonight, that evening, April 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, those four, well, I don't know if I named four or five, but those four meetings, you have to be presented with the articles on the town meeting. You have to create the warrant. You have to discuss the budget and vote all on it and sign the warrant. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And Ed and I are looking forward to working together again.
Yeah. No, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. The call has gone out and a deadline has been put out for any warrant articles, so.
Okay, great.
People are aware of what that is.
Excellent.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Reverend. Okay. All right. I think we will close open time and move on to presentations. We have two this evening. And I'd like to welcome Jeff Mastroiani, who is our new, I'm not sure exactly of your title, but the new head of the East Hampton Media.
Yes, thank you.
New contact.
I am the new executive director of East Hampton.
Executive director. All right.
That's right.
Perfect. Thank you.
And thank you for allowing me to come here before you this evening. I'm basically here to speak about a capital grant that has become available as a stipulation of your contract with Charter Communications. And I'm going to have to probably lean on Ed a little bit to fill in some of the gaps here. But to the best of my understanding, at the five-year mark, the town was available to ask for up to $50,000 as a capital grant. And that the town would need to provide a letter to Charter to request those funds. And I would need to come here before you to ask you to put this up on the agenda for your next town meeting. So with that, let me just say that in the last four months since I've been on the job, I've spent a great deal of time assessing the needs of our organization. And, and they are substantial, I have to tell you, especially with respect to our equipment, both the equipment that we use to broadcast to your local channels and to East Hampton, and also the equipment that we use to cover town events, the equipment that our members use to produce content for our channels. Most of that equipment, if not all, is either at or past its end of life date. The most important of these things would be our playback system. And by that, I mean the equipment that we actually use to broadcast. That equipment now is well past its end of life. We are behind most other public access organizations in terms of the services that we're able to provide. And by that, I mean, we're not able to stream our channels. Most other stations of our size are able to stream their channels 24/7. We are not able to do that currently. And that's, that's one of the things primarily that I think is a big issue for us, given the fact that people are going away from over-the-wire media content and resorting more to streaming and that sort of thing. And then we also have basically just the needs of the communities that we have picked up on. And, and again, this has been coming for some time. And, you know, our understanding is that we, we need to be able to provide closed captioning, especially for live broadcasts. So that is something that we're looking into, that would be included with the new playback system. And so basically, we're looking at, in the neighborhood of about $50,000 to replace that equipment. That's on the low end. And, and that still doesn't give us really full playback capabilities. And when I say that, I mean that currently we're only able to provide programming, and that is actual programming of content that we put on ourselves for two of the three channels that we're operating in East Hampton right now, because we have to broadcast a channel here for you folks, and we need one back for our recording purposes. So for things to stay as they are, we, again, we're looking at about a $50,000 payout for a new system. And that's really just the beginning, and this is an aside, but to provide things like closed captioning would add another probably 6 to $10,000 to our operating budget every year. And so that's something that we're having to consider. You know, how are we going to raise those funds in the particular climate that we're in right now, where people are going away from cable, again, going more towards streaming? And so, you know, we're going to have to get busy fundraising and getting out into the community and providing production services for folks. And so to do all that, again, you know, we're going to need the equipment. And, and so while I understand, you know, Ed and I have been in communication regarding some of the needs that we have here in Southampton, some things that we'd like to have installed here in this room and perhaps, you know, other locations in this building, we would be requesting a substantial portion of that money. But again, this is something that's up for negotiation. And, and this is the part where I turn to Ed and I, I ask you how this process actually plays out, and then, you know, where do we go from here?
Well, process is really the Select Boards. So, I mean, I can do their bidding and getting them the information, but they're the ones that would have to actually authorize the funds, agree to put the, a article on the town meeting warrant to exercise those funds or appropriate those funds for their use. And then Town Meeting would have to vote on that. You know, previously, they did vote to transfer those funds when we were redoing the equipment in this, this room, which was approximately $50,000. So, I mean, their job is to try to balance that out with any needs that may be in this building or another building. I know we had talked a little bit about maybe upgrading the equipment up in the second floor meeting room. And one of the biggest part going into that, and I don't know where the school committee is or is going to go, but, you know, at one time, and this was pre-COVID, we had talked about investing in equipment to be installed at the library. So the school committee meeting, meetings could be basically broadcast. However, the school committee has been meeting here in Town Hall and using this equipment. So I don't know if, you know, their intent is to keep doing that or at some point go back. And it would be a plus to have equipment in the Norris Library or what have you. So those are the balancing acts. But, you know, I also recognize the fact that, okay, you could call this the front end of the broadcast, but we understand that, you know, you need that equipment in your headquarters also to make it go out to the individuals that either subscribe to Charter on 191 or want to see it streaming or rebroadcast or what have you.
Just the 50,000, just so I'm clear, the 50,000 capital grant you talked about from Charter, is that right? And so that's the money that you're asking for to be redirected, if you will, reprogrammed toward this equipment cost? And is that, that's just Southampton's portion, but that's only a portion of what you need for covering all of East Hampton? I mean, this would, our 50,000 would do more than just cover the Southampton needs?
So this would basically go into our, our capital budget, which, you know, this, this $50,000 more or less that we're looking to spend right now is going to chew up a good portion of our remaining capital budget for the next five years until we enter our next round of negotiations and contract, contract negotiations. So, you know, a portion of that money, again, would be used toward the playback system. A portion of that money would be used to upgrade our field production equipment and our studio equipment. You know, we, when we come and cover your town meetings, we bring out, you know, about 10 or $15,000 worth of gear in order to do that. And again, these, these cameras and so forth are aged. And so we want to make sure we can fulfill our mission and provide the services that we need to provide for the community.
So this equipment would be exclusively for the use of Southampton, and your request for East Hampton would, and their equipment needs would go to them? Is that correct?
Well, so, I mean, we don't, we don't really have our equipment divided out.
Divided up. I understand that.
Right, right. So this is basically going to go into our capital budget.
And I guess the question is, are you requesting similar amount of money from East Hampton?
So the reason I'm asking for this money now was because this basically came up as a part of your contract, that this money became available at the five-year mark.
Okay.
So, yes, to answer your question, I will be asking for more money from East Hampton in whatever way that can happen, whether it's through grants or what have you.
So is this the money that the ratepayers pay that's classified as PEG access?
Yes.
That comes into the town coffers, but here you're asking for it to be redirected?
No, that's different.
This is above and beyond?
Wait a minute. No?
Yeah. Our, our contract calls are two different pieces. And there's the basic PEG access funds that come in that the ratepayers pay. And we get that funding. And when we get that funding, East Hampton Media invoices us, and we pass that along for their operational expenses. That 10-year contract also called for two capital payments to the town. One at the beginning, beginning of it, which was $50,000, which was just utilized for the new equipment in here, and then a second capital payment of $50,000 for equipment that came, came in basically the second half of the fifth year of that contract.
So when that second portion is delivered, right, East Hampton Media is asking for us to redirect it to them. But regardless whether we redirect it or we take it, are the ratepayers going to see an increase on their bill? Or is it factored in over the 10?
It's already factored in over the 10 years.
Okay.
Were you going to say that there was another fund besides this? Or you're just saying that...
Well, we have the, basically the PEG access fund, which is the operating expenses. And then we had this, the equipment capital account. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the contract we signed in 2020, right, is, we're not... And correct me if I'm wrong, but the contract we signed in 2020, right, is, we're not, is this what we're talking about is a five-year mark? What are we doing? The one we have?
Actually, the license was in 2017.
Oh, the license, okay, separate thing, okay.
Right. It was signed, it was signed before I got here, so I don't remember if it was either 16 or 17.
Okay, so that's the actual licensing agreement, okay, different.
With Charter, correct.
Okay.
Could I ask a couple of questions? It's in general, so I don't know if people wanted to ask any more questions about his request or?
I just, I guess, if you want me to support this, I'm going to need to see something. Like, here's the equipment we want to get, here's the list, here's the costs, here's the averages. This is what, you know, the whole 20-page proposal that you're going to use, because I'm assuming, are you required to follow public bidding process in procurement? No, so you're freelancing, buy from anybody. All right. But $50,000 is a lot, for my seat here, $50,000 is a lot of money when it doesn't sound like there's a penny coming from the East Hampton side. If $50,000 was one-third of the total amount, $150,000 you need, I'd be more on board. And I'm not saying I'm against it right now, because I'd want to understand what's happened in the past when I wasn't here. And I get the whole idea that you got to pay for the infrastructure behind the scenes to make everything happen. But I guess I'd want to know more about the details. Where are the $50,000s going? And on top of that, all the little requests that we have here, like a switch that we could flip that turned all our microphones red, for example. Is that even going to get addressed if we turn this $50,000 over? You don't have to answer that tonight. I'm just saying, those are the type of questions that, you know, we don't see you for another five years. So it's more of a statement in order to support it. Thanks.
I don't want to put you on the spot, because I know you recently started, but there has been a change, a lot of change in leadership at East Hampton Media. And I'm looking at the contract, and I just wanted to just point a couple of things out to you, and I'm not asking for a response. But, you know, we did get a lot of equipment, and I don't know if any of the insurance has been updated since that happened. So I'm just hoping that that's the case. And the contract also says that we're supposed to get an annual report, and they're also supposed to get a presentation on your budget, and that's been really inconsistent. So I'm just hoping that that would be a good thing to finally get. It says here, "East Hampton Media shall provide the town of Southampton a projected annual budget within 30 days of approval of the same by East Hampton Media." By the way, I think it should change the name. And then, "East Hampton Media shall prepare and send to the town an annual report for each calendar year." You know, the kill switch, which was mentioned, we go somewhere else to executive session because we're not clear that it's actually off. And the other thing is, we can't record in this room. So there's definitely some things that have come up that are important to us, aside from some of the backend things. So it would be great in the future to actually have a conversation about what things would help the town here.
Or how we can modify some of the equipment we have got, that we paid for, that we did put in place, but isn't quite necessarily maybe satisfactory to how we would like to see it operate, so.
Understood. And as I said, you know, Ed and I have been in communication about these things. I am aware of the needs, and we're trying to move as quickly as we can to make these improvements and help you out.
Okay, all right.
And the annual report is forthcoming.
Okay.
Our annual meeting is going to be, I believe, at the end of May.
Yeah, it says here, "They shall prepare and send the annual report by May 31st." Is your budget July 1 to?
No.
Its calendar?
Yeah.
So it'd be great to have a budget from last year.
Okay.
Okay, good. Well, I think for tonight, we probably have no actual decision-making to happen. It was good to hear what you've got on your mind and what you'd like us to consider. And I think you've probably given a fair amount of information to Ed to take a look at, and we'll probably have to have further discussions at our level to understand what else we might need from you if we wanted to get this on a town warrant.
Okay, very good.
So thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, moving on. We have another presentation from the Council on Aging. We have a report of the exploratory subcommittee we have.
Good evening, I'm Joan Lenahan, the Southampton Council on Aging Director, and I have with me Janet Kane.
Yeah, the Chair of the Council on Aging Advisory Board, 83 Glendale Road. And we wanted to ask if it was okay for the people that are listening that we read what we submitted to you, so that we can share it with more than the folks in this room. Yeah.
Go ahead. I just want to preface it by saying Happy St. Patrick's Week to everyone. And I want to say, build it and they will come. Of our approximately 6,000 Southampton residents, 2,000 are over 60, a third of our population. And currently, we have a 2,000-square-foot space to conduct business. As the Council on Aging's and senior centers have enlarged in the past 15 years, including standalone buildings, the attendance has tripled. In 2007, Northampton opened their doors. 2009, Agawam, and I was involved with that building of the new senior center. 2012, Hoyoke built a center. 2014, Chicopee. 2015, Westfield. 2016, Springfield, the Raymond Jordan Center in Blunt Park. 2020, Hadley. 2021, South Hadley. And 2021, Long Meadow, with an indoor walking track and a three-court pickleball. Possibly 2025, Southampton. First, I'd like to personally thank our benefactor, Mr. Red David Parsons, for his generosity and foresight. And the people that were in the informal exploratory committee who compiled the initial group of their interest and commitment to this project. Janet Kane, our Council on Aging Chair, Jonathan J., Council on Aging Board Member, Darcy Gasparini, business owner, Realtor, and friend to Red Parsons, and Maureen Groden, Select Board Member and Liaison to the COA Board. And this is the report that was compiled by the group. "In July 2021, the Council on Aging received notice, a copy of the will from the estate of recently deceased Southampton resident David Red Parsons, that he had left a substantial request to the town for construction of a new senior center. At that time, the town administrator, the COA Director, and the COA Board Chair were awaiting final appointment of the personal representative for the estate, which took another two months. Given the time-sensitive nature of the bequest, two years from the date of his death, the COA Board Chair Janet Kane formed an exploratory committee, a subcommittee of the COA Board, to identify preliminary issues. And the building group was the ones that I named previously. As of March 3rd, the committee has met seven times, beginning in October of 2021. The exploratory committee has identified issues which the town will need to explore further and make decisions on with respect to the bequests and potential construction of a new senior center. They have toured new senior centers in Hadley and South Hadley, which opened in 2020 and 2021 respectively, and the senior center in Irving, and spoke with personnel there about what had been involved in their town's exploratory process, the formation of a building committee, financing, town approval, retention of an architect and a construction firm, what worked and what did not, and their recommendations to us. The committee hopes to plan visits to one or two more other senior centers built in the last 10 years. But they've been in contact with personal representative for David Parsons' estate and the estate attorney regarding the bequests and issues related to processing the bequest, discussed with town administrator Ed Gibson the process of moving forward, met with the attorney for the estate to gain clarification on the final plan, and learned in February that the conservative amount of the bequest is to be $2.5 million. Mr. Parsons' will established a deadline in which to complete and approve final plan for a new senior center. The date is May 17, 2023. Given the amount of work that needs to be completed prior to the date, the Council on Aging Board Subcommittee believes that this time is now for the Select Board to create a feasibility ad hoc committee to replace the informal subcommittee. We would like the Select Board to take action tonight, if possible, to approve this committee and request that any interested invested members of the exploratory COA Board Subcommittee be strongly considered as members of the feasibility ad hoc committee, along with the COA Director. Our charge is simple, to research the requirements for an RFP, RFQ with the assistance of the town administrator, and hire a company to compete, complete the feasibility study within six months. And Janet has the actual charge?
Maybe we should just open it, if anybody up to this point has any questions from the Select Board.
The first question, do we actually have the charge in our packets here?
Yes.
It's in the packet.
Can somebody point it out to me?
I have an extra if you want.
It was back on, it's back on item 11 or 12. There's a copy.
See, this one doesn't have the signatures, though. I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here, use one.
I have what you just read, I just don't have.
Oh, you don't get the charge.
It might have been on the backside of another page there, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Janet.
I'm not staying. So again, if there's any questions before we move into the charge, I did spend a little time with Ed Gibson on Friday. He helped me kind of maneuver, and I also took a look at some of the other ad hoc committees that had been established and to kind of set up some guidelines that I thought would expedite the process. So I'm happy to review the charge if, for public purposes, if you want.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read it out?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So naming is always the fun part, right? So a nice short name should be the Ad Hoc Senior Center Building Feasibility Committee. I don't know what that spells out, but, and the purpose would be to determine the needed size of the new center, layout, and location, determine if any town buildings could be repurposed or expanded, and identify the availability of any other suitable buildings or properties in town, identify key elements that must be included in a senior center design, an additional secondary element, if possible, to include, work with the town administrator to draft a statement of work and develop an RFQ for a planning and design consultant, provide information as required to the selected consulting firm regarding the site location, interior layout, and complete the feasibility study and to determine the potential design and construction cost. So that's more or less the purpose. The membership, our recommendation, our request would be the committee comprises of seven voting members, including the COA Board Chair and a member of the Select Board. The town administrator and COA Director will serve as ex-official non-voting members. Five additional voting members shall be town residents and appointed by the Select Board. Individuals interested in being appointed must submit the town's volunteer application form accompanied by a cover note explaining in more detail their experience relevant to the task and their interest in being a member of this committee. Residents with background in engineering and building construction are encouraged to apply. Applications we're targeting to be received by the town administrator by May 23, 2022, by noon, so that they can take action at the next Select Board meeting following that. And the committee may begin meeting as long as we have a quorum of four intended full membership, which would be a quorum of four. We would recommend that the meeting is biweekly, and the committee will elect officers at the first meeting. Duration, we're hoping to have the process completed by, within six months, but if not, our duration is to, our goal is to have a study completed by May 17, 2023. So that would be the duration of the committee at this point. At that point, we would probably then move forward and to establish sometime in that timeframe, a building, an official building committee.
Okay. So this is just for the feasibility study now, the idea of the design, location, layout?
This is just for the feasibility study.
Okay.
Which is what's required in the estate.
Okay.
To have a study completed by May 17, 2023.
Okay, all right. Any questions, thoughts from anybody?
And we're very excited, can I say? That Mr. Parsons bequested this amount of money to the senior center, and to, and we want to thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Well, I think the town should be very excited in general to have that, that kind of a bequest. So, good.
I have one question. Is the committee looking at just town-owned property or also potentially purchasing property? Is that a possibility?
No, I, yeah, just to be clear, town buildings could be repurposed or expanded, and to identify availability of any other suitable buildings or properties in town, in addition to town-owned properties, no. So we wouldn't limit ourselves, we can't limit ourselves to town-owned property.
Okay.
We want them to look at as many options as possible, to see what we come up to, with the best option.
Then I would broaden the background to engineering, building, construction, or real estate development, if you're also considering, if you need to purchase a property.
Well, and you're making these encourage to apply, but you're not requiring them. At this point in time, I mean, I think you might get, more of those might be extremely relevant for the building committee itself, right?
Well, feasibility, if you need to purchase a property, or if you're looking at different properties, you need to know if you can put a bill, a senior center there.
And our good, you know, the purpose of trying to outreach to a firm that has experience in this area too, because we don't, you know, amongst us necessarily have that, that experience, so.
And both South Hadley and Hadley had the same architect, and they were recommended. They worked very well for them, so.
I couldn't hear everything that Joy was saying, but I just want to, my only comment here is on the second bullet point, is I'd like to specify that it's the availability of any other suitable buildings or building properties. Just put the word "building" in front of "properties." I don't want to give the impression that we're only looking to repurpose existing buildings. And that's, it, maybe I'm too literal, but that would.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, properties, I think, are pretty all-inclusive, but in order to build, I mean, the goal is to make sure we, we may not just repurpose buildings, but if we have the right property to buy the property and build there, we'll look at expanding the current senior center, which if, in reality, if we look at Hadley, which is a similar-sized community with seniors, their senior center is 10,000 square feet. As Joan mentioned, ours is two. Even Irving, where we went to visit recently, there's a six, and they have 350 seniors in town. So we're close to five times their size. So we have to balance reality and funding and still try to meet the requirements of the community. So we're not stuck on a number, but we know it's, we're going to, it'd be very hard, I think. But we'll certainly look at the possibility and feasibility of, you know, expanding the senior center if that, if that's even a possibility. But all options are on the table.
I'll make a motion to establish the Senior Center Building Feasibility Committee with the charge and membership that Joan and Janet specified, with the amendment that Joy added to include real estate folks in addition to engineering, construction.
And your words were real estate development?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
No.
Got a second? Okay, didn't hear that.
Discussion, yeah, I got a list of questions. So you said you want, well, you said you want to be done by May 26? Is that what you said?
Of 2023.
Oh, 2023, okay, all right.
As it states in the.
That's per the bequest and the will.
That's for the study to be done by May 2023.
So between now and then, where, if any funds are going to be spent, where are the funds going to come from?
So at the moment, based on our discussions with the lawyer for the estate, there is, there will be money designated to us, whether we make that deadline or not. So we will have funds from them to do the, pay for the feasibility study.
Do we have an idea what that cap is? So I would want to set parameters, pick a number, it's X. So then I would want to specify that you can't spend more than that X, because we don't have, as far as I know, maybe you do, you don't have a line item, a slush fund, within the Council on Aging to cover an overage, right?
We have a friends group, but they have that kind of.
So if we look at the will as it stated, we would get 25% of the final number, which minimum.
So when it came time to do the SOW, we could, we could put parameters on it?
We made sure that we got that authority.
And then, the, I'm looking at the, at the charge that we did for the public safety building, and some of the language that we put into that, in the new one, that isn't on here, that I would ask the committee to consider adding in, is we let the public safety, or Public Safety Building Committee go as far as getting ready to go out and do the bid, but then we stopped them, said, "You got to come back and check in with us before you do it." Under this charge, there is no yellow light. Once this charge is approved, they can create the SOW and go out and get it, and get it done. There's no check back in with us. In the fairness equation, I understand we're on a tight timeline, but I think it doesn't hurt to check in. And to put that in writing. it doesn't hurt to check in. And to put that in writing, I would advocate for that. And then on the buildings and feasibility, in my view, or in my history, if it's silent, it doesn't exist. So the charge doesn't say anything about potential incorporation with the public safety building that we're also going to potentially fund. So I would want that looked at. And if it's a no-fit, it's a no-fit, and then an explanation as to why to come back. So I, I guess that's my way of saying, if you're going to rule out any town property, I would just like a couple of bullet points as to why. I'm sure it's all going to be justified, but we have something to go back, because at some point, we're going to face the voters. Well, why didn't they do this? Or why, well, because they did their study and this is what they said.
Are you talking about, not in the, you're talking about the future of public safety company?
Well, no, I was saying on the Council on Aging here, when they go out, because they're, they're asked to, to determine on their own whether an existing town property, whatever that is.
With their consultant.
Is suitable or not.
Right.
And if it's not, I would just like, I would like to hear more than, it's not suitable. It's not suitable because boom, boom, boom. Okay. Fair enough. You know, they did their due diligence. I want more documentation to be more transparent, because at some point I'm sensing this is going to go to the ballot for funding. And, and we'll be better.
Will it? I don't know. Will it?
Not, not during the feasibility, not during this phase.
Well, not on the feasibility, but eventually. I mean, I was, I was, I was in Hoyok 09 to 16 when we built the Hoyok Senior Center. And as treasurer, Jennifer should probably go hide. But we use no money tax credits, which I'm assuming are not eligible out here because of our census tract. That's a whole nother story. But I guess I would say, they should, they should go all the way forward with the SOW, but when it's ready, pause, bring it back to the next board meeting. The board meeting should just bless it that night, or modify it, but have a chance to see it before it goes out to the contractors. Because it's the same thing we put on the public safety building. We put that yellow light out there.
So again, that's a building, that's building, not feasibility. So it's not quite apple, apples. But, and then we do have a Select Board member and the town administrator as representation. But I mean, certainly, once we have the statement of work, I would expect it to be shared with a board. And then, once we get the study completed, deliver it back to town leadership. So I mean, whatever you need to, to make you feel comfortable.
Yeah. And we, and we have a board member and town administrator on that committee too. I'm just saying transparency.
Again, this is a feasibility study. This is not the building. So it's quite, it's not quite the same.
But you're, you're asking for it to be consistent.
Which is probably going to cost $100, $150,000.
We recorded 40 to 50,000 for.
Yeah. I don't, we, we don't know yet. So.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, if you'd like my support, which I would, I just ask for that yellow light to be put in there.
It's up to the Select Board.
Correct.
I'm happy to amend my motion that after, before it goes out to bid, that, that there'll be a report back to the Select Board.
Okay.
And just any rejection of any current town property, give a brief explanation as to why.
The statement of work is not going to reject any state property.
That's just getting the consult.
This is just getting the design.
Well, why is it in the charge then?
No, I mean.
The statement of work to develop an RFQ for planning and design.
To go off for the RFP.
It's just for planning and design.
You won't have a decision yet. It's just to get.
Bullet point number two, determine if any town building could be repurposed or expanded and identified.
You got it.
But that's, that's the, after the study is completed, that's not the statement of work to re, hire somebody to do the study.
Correct. But it's all encompassed within your charge. So if, if I don't object to it now, your charge is approved and then you don't have to do it. You follow me? Because bullet point number two says you're going to determine whether or not any existing town property is suitable. Yes or no? Bullet point, I think, four or five talks about statement of work.
Are things just simply out of order in terms of, the statement of work is, is that not part of what your consultant, your future consultant would do, would be to identify potential town properties? Is that?
That would be part of.
That would be part of the work, right? I mean, I'm wondering if this is just.
That would be reviewing all potential properties. I mean, I'm happy to put whatever you feel, to make you feel comfortable, but I don't want to, you know.
Ed, what do you think? Is this a matter of reordering, where the, the, working with you to draft the SOW and develop an RFQ?
I guess, is it, is it your view that you think when the statement of work is out there and published and the report comes back, that report within its body will, will give statements as to whether or not town property is suitable?
I, I would expect that to be part of that.
Because you need to know how much land we need and, you know, we may not have it, something that.
I mean, we can make it part of the statement of work that we, or the RFP, that we requested a full explanation as to elimination process. And however, I mean, I would want to know why they said no to A or no to B, you know.
I'm fine with that. If, if that answer is going to be buried incorporated.
Yeah, I don't want it to be buried.
Okay. Are we all set?
Yeah.
All right. So I admitted my motion, but I don't know if this person that's seconded is seconding that to have them come back before it's actually gone out for.
I mean, that's just reviewing the RFQ. Do you typically review the RFQ before it goes out? Like for our, the pickleball courts for?
Oftentimes, we've delegated that to, to the town administrator. So that would be.
I mean, but once, if you want to say, once the feasibility study is complete, come back and make sure we do a public review with this. I'm just trying to understand then be consistent with other.
Yeah.
Studies that were done.
So at this point in time, we, yeah, we would, we would be, I think we've said that, like for the public safety building committee, that once they've done their work, before any, anything happens with, with building, they've definitely got, I mean, they're, they're kind of finite and they come back to sort of do phase two, which is the actual building portion. And I think this is trying to say something similar, is it not?
Whatever language is most, you know, I'm, I'm not hung up on the language. I just want to make sure we're clear that the statement of work is to give, create an RFQ, not to, you know, the final.
The statement of work is for the consultant themselves, to find the consultant.
Help define.
Planning and design consultant.
Are we understanding this right? The, the RFQ, the SOW and the RFQ is to help identify the consultant, the design consultant first itself. They will then, part of their work will be also looking at.
We're going to ask, request them as part of their, our.
Which, which is going to be the language that the town puts together in the SOW is what's going to give them the charge. And I, I'd like to see it before, before it goes out there, if we're asking for something on top of Mount Olympus. I mean, it's just, that's all.
Okay. I don't think there's a big issue with that. I mean, I don't know that there's.
It's transparent.
Yeah.
People are interested.
Whatever makes people comfortable.
Yeah, people want to know what's going on.
This is a major.
Okay. So I think we have the seconded motion on, maybe not seconded. We did have a second, but let's be clear. Could you repeat that motion, just so that we're clear?
My motion was that we would follow the advice of the charge of the feasibility committee and also the membership of the committee with the addition of including people with real estate background, in addition to a construction and engineering folks, and that we would request a report back prior to it going out for bid, or for RFQ with a report.
Okay. Is that what you seconded, Francine?
Yeah, I'll second it. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
That was for that change, right? That wasn't for the whole thing? Do you have more?
No, because she amended the original motion.
Okay. So I just assume you have, you said a lot of questions.
Well, you answered pretty quick when it wasn't May 23rd of this year.
Okay. Exactly. No, that, that would, I'd be much more panicked than this.
That would be a little bit of a challenge. That would be a little bit of a challenge. Okay. Good. Now that took.
So someone has, will make those changes then and?
Right. Yep. And then we would need to, could we, I'd rather not, we don't need to wait until the next meeting on this, because you want to get.
Yeah, my request is if you can approve the charge tonight, which I thought you just voted on.
Can we?
I make a, a motion to appoint the COA Board Chair and a member of the Select Board to be identified very shortly. The town administrator and the COA Director will serve in an ex-official non-voting body and to solicit five additional members from the public.
Right. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's part of the membership.
But, right, then we just, we just approved the charge on the last vote, right? So now we're just appointing the people so they can start meeting while we solicit the other five folks?
I think that the hope is that we would set a date and that we, I mean, I think it's fine to assign the ex officio member and even Board Chair and Select Board person. But I think for the other people, I think it's better to collect them all and then appoint them after point, because I think if we learn from the public safety committee, it's probably better to set a deadline date and then just let people apply from there.
So we're asking the deadline date to be March 23rd at noon?
Anybody up to five members to be, five more, five other members.
And then at the next meeting, you would review those applications and make.
But in the meantime, other groups could start meeting.
And make the appointment.
Once we have four voting members.
You only have, yeah. So right now, you've only got two. So, but I think as part of the charge, we've understood, at least I've understood, that you're, you're asking basically that the Board Chair and a member of the Select Board to be determined momentito, I think, would be voting members of this new committee. The town administrator and the COA Director will also be there, but as ex officio members, right?
Right.
And non-voting. Okay. And so you need to recruit five other voting members. Okay. Yep. No, I think we're good with that. So at this point, I think what we need to do is to recommend who amongst us would like to be the Select Board representative and.
So Ed will take applications starting tomorrow.
Okay. Ed will take applications. Yes. Applications can be sent in. Okay. Yeah. People know where to go on the town website, on the volunteer forms to do that. And preferably to add, as this has said, a cover note in terms of expanded experience. Recommendations for who should be the Select Board person on this committee?
I would make a motion to recommend Reenie Groden as the COA liaison from the Select Board to serve on this committee.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Any other volunteers?
Will you accept?
Yeah. Would you accept?
Liaison COA, so that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Let's take a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Reenie, you are, you are on this committee. Thank you. All right.
Did you have a seat down this morning?
It wasn't seconded.
So, okay.
Okay. So where, do we need to appoint Joan and Ed, or is that, and also Janet's a voting member, so they have to be appointed, or?
I don't think so. The way this, well, the way I read this charge is they are.
They're included in.
Included in the membership already, the way this is written.
Okay. So then there's four people now.
The COA Board Chair is, is a status member, and then the town administrator and the COA Director are also included, but they're not, not voting members. Okay. So as far as I'm concerned, that's four people.
Okay.
Out of, technically, you'll have a nine-person committee, of which seven are voting.
Uh, yes.
Right? Okay. The way I understand it. Okay.
And I'm just, for, for the committee, because I slipped and I didn't make it into the charge, but wherever possible, all your meetings should be recorded and broadcast, whether, again, building on the whole transparency to the public.
That's a given from my perspective.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
If the State Formula Grant item is a quick thing, could we, well, they're here, could we just do that, or point of order?
Okay. Point of order. Yeah. But we do have one more item related to the COA. It's under new business. Sorry. Right. We did wrong paper. Here we go. Yep. Yeah. The, the State Formula, State Funding Formula Grant. Yes, we got some paperwork on this. And would anybody like to speak to this? It looks like a lot of this is administrative changes. Yeah. Joan?
So as of fiscal year 2021, they've eliminated the requirement to submit invoices for the Council on Aging. We're staying with the same budget, but there's no bottom line, because we have, the 2010 census, they do it every 10 years. So it's based on the federal census and that, in 2010, we had 1,208 seniors. So every year, we get $14,496. And that will stay one more year. We don't, we have to submit an annual report to say, you know, how we spent that money. But we don't have to put a budget forward to say how we potentially hope to spend that money, although it is good, fiscally responsible to have an idea of paying wages or, or programs, et cetera.
So, and the one thing that looked like a change here is that this is now going to be a 10-year grant?
Correct. It's going to be 10 years, but the amount could change. So next year, they may, I think they're supposed to use the 2020 census. And then they changed the dollar amount, you know, it may, right now, it's $12 per senior. It could go down, it could go up.
Okay.
Some, some communities lose money because they lose seniors. We have gained seniors. So, you know, it should, our budget should be pretty good, as long as they keep it at $12 per senior, per year.
Okay. So once this is agreed to and signed, then this is in place and you don't have to do this annually to, to request funds. It, it sounds like it's going to be kind of automatically dispersed to the town, is that right?
That's what it sounds like. This is the first time I've experienced it. And I've been, in doing this for over 24 years.
Yeah. This looks like a different, it sounds like they're trying to streamline a little bit here or something.
They lost a very key person in, in executive office, Emmett Schmarrzoff. And he used to do all this. So I think when he retired, they retired that.
All right. So at this point, you're asking for?
Signatures, just to, to verify that, you know, that we are accepting this $14,496 from the state.
All right. All right.
Actually, the signature is for the 10-year.
Yeah, for the 10-year period, right?
All right. But that dollar amount is throughout.
For the 10-year period. That would vary over the 10 years. Okay. Ed, would you have any recommendation as to who would be the appropriate signatory here? I mean, given, I don't know that I've seen a grant that's this long.
No. Yeah. I would probably recommend that our town accountant Bradley Oxson be authorized to sign for this particular grant.
Okay. And that because the money comes in directly without having to do a reimbursement?
Yeah, they've changed it so it comes in indirectly. So we don't, do not have to have the, have to file for the reimbursement. Plus, might as well get Bradley's feet wet and start him in the, in the grant process.
Okay. Could I have a second to that motion? Was that a motion? I'm sorry. Was that a motion? That was a recommendation? I'm sorry.
Question. Did they indicate if the turnover to us is going to be monthly with the cherry sheets, or is it going to be annually, or we don't know?
Do not know at this point. My assumption, which always gets me in trouble, is that it'd be a one-time payment to us.
It has up till now, right?
It's been annually in the past.
Well, it's been reimbursed.
It's been reimbursed. Yeah, that's right. Sorry. Yeah. So it doesn't really specify that in the language that we, that we have in front of us, I think, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the Council on Aging Formula Grant for a period of 10 years and authorize the town accountant in his official capacity to sign on our behalf.
Okay. Could I have a second?
A second.
All right. All right. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor. Let's have a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So be it.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. All right. Okay. Great. Thank you, everyone, for putting them up there. Now we'll continue back on our normal schedule here. All right. We have a few quarterly reports tonight. Let's start with the Cemetery Commission Report. Judith Conlin Miller?
Sure. It's Miller Conlin. And with the caveat that if this starts to hurt too much, I'll call Robert up.
Okay. Sounds good. Just introduce yourself, Judith.
Okay. My name is Judith Miller Conlin. I'm the Chairman of the Cemetery Commission. Live at 10 Douglas Road, if you needed that. So we went through the list of your items that you wanted to talk about. And I, you should all have copies.
Yeah, we do.
So I'm just going to read through that and we'll answer best we can. Robert is here. He's the superintendent, so he can fill in on a lot of the more maintenance and some of those projects that are going on.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay? So 2021 was a difficult year for the Senator Cemetery property. On August 12th, you might remember, there was a big storm blew through and a big healthy pine tree came over, pushed over several sections of the 122-year-old cast iron fence. And then just before Christmas, a hit-and-run collision damaged one of the ornate cornerposts on the northern entrance. So repairing and restoring these items is, is very high on our agenda list of projects for this year. The water lines, the water lines desperately need, require repair, something we've been trying to get done since 2017. And we've met many stumbling blocks along the way. Currently, there's only a few hydrants available, with none of them working in the majority of the cemetery. Believe me, we get calls all the time, and I feel for people. Robert, do you have something you'd like, since he's superintendent, can talk to the water lines? Is it easier if you sit down? Yeah. I don't know. If it starts to hurt, it will.
I'll be sure.
Starts to hurt anymore.
That's everything that I know. The trials and tribulations for 11, five years. It's 11 pages.
It's 11 pages. I believe it's too much to present tonight. What I would recommend, or ask, if we could postpone that part to your next meeting.
Okay.
And this gives everybody a chance to be on the same page.
Can I ask a question? Wasn't there a warrant article about the water for the cemetery?
Yes, there was, but they were, was an increase in price, to summarize it, and that's explained there. There was an increase in price by a couple thousand. There was a new code requirement, that was an increase of 4,000-ish, and so suddenly, we, we couldn't proceed with all the work for the amount that the people voted for at the town meeting and also at the election.
Yeah, the two pieces were, one, in the original quote, it wasn't accounted for for the fact of needing a backflow preventer and a concrete slab and a cage to house it. And the other piece was the original quote wasn't done via prevailing wage, which was probably the more substantial increase in cost.
Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
And just one other question, is the water source for the cemetery, other residents that also utilize that water source? It's just for the cemetery?
We have, for five years, been paying the bills, and not much.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's assume that we might need to come back and discuss this in a little bit more detail and understand if this needs to be perhaps yet again on the town warrant for, yeah, meeting, or something, to figure that out. So thank you, Robert, for compiling that, and we'll, we'll have it to look at for next time. So go ahead, Judith.
And onto budget, budget spending, status and concerns. The cemetery's been level funded for the past several years, which inhibits our efforts to maintain, repair, and restore the property. In addition to the town, in addition to looking to the town to give us additional monies, we are pursuing other sources of funding, including applying to the CPA for grants to help fund the fence repair. I think that would fall well under the historical end of things. And we've established a new program, which is the Friends of the Southampton Cemetery, which has a dedicated account to accept outside donations. So looking into outside grants would now be possible to, to put in. And these funds would help with the repair of old stones that have suffered weather or vehicular damage, which is another reason we don't want anybody in there in the wintertime, because things get damaged. To continue the fence upkeep, I think you'll remember from last, 2020, when we had a number of citizens out there painting the fence. It was, it was a great thing. I should say, a number of women out there painting the fence. Where are we here? And to buy tools and materials needed to clean and straighten antique or damaged stones that no longer have local families to maintain them, that really doesn't fall under perpetual care. In fact, most of the stones that are in the older part of the cemetery have no perpetual care, so we're, that's why we have to look to the town for some extra help, just to get the, the basic work done.
Would that be the section toward High Street, then?
Yes, even the first five sections. There's, there's really very little perpetual care paid on that. The newer ones, yes, they have. A major concern is the status of our bank accounts, which have been in limbo for nearly a year. We've been told they are awaiting new account numbers and a changeover of the funds into those new accounts, but thus far, we've not seen any progress, so we're not sure what we have. The accounts reflect budgeted town money, money from the sale of cemetery lots, the perpetual care funds, and a special stone repair count, as well as this new friends account, which hasn't really gotten rolling yet, but it's, it's there, it's in position. Any questions on those?
Is the friends account, is it an actual 501(c)(3), or is it a?
You said that.
Or it is.
Is he here?
Yeah.
I don't know anything about a friends account, but that would not be able to be, shall we say, accounted for here. It would be an outside agency, so it would not be part of the governmental reporting.
Okay. We'll skip that then.
Others would be, yeah. And so some of those would be, some of the revolving, or not revolving funds, but other, other funds that you've been, other gift funds that you may have that you operate from, right? So, so definitely, I think, a lot of that work is, is happening as we're closing out the fiscal books for 2021, and so you should have those figures relatively soon.
And asking about personnel and staffing, we don't employ any personnel. We do contract with a heavy equipment operator who digs the graves, but we're not involved with any exchange of money for those services. They're dealt with, directly with the digger, and generally, it's the funeral home, but sometimes it's directly with the family who's making arrangements. So that's, doesn't apply to us, really. Over the next six months, first off, will be the annual spring cleanup. We work with the highway department and various local groups to remove debris from the winter, and that's all the old leaves and the fallen branches and the twigs and things that come down, along with the artificial flowers and holiday decorations. They have to be removed by May 1st, so that we can get ready for Memorial Day. The scouts have been great, they've been very helpful in pitching in on the work alongside, sometimes just residents like to come and help us out, and the students from Hampshire Regional High School can fulfill their community service requirements. We've had a number of them come up for various times. We, we work very well with Randall Kemp and the highway department to get the cemetery ready for Memorial Day. They're very helpful. We pile things up in big piles, and they come and, and take them away, and just get them out before Memorial Day. They also will sometimes come and smooth the roads, especially if they've been damaged by the winter, because they're mostly dirt, they're all dirt and stone roads. We are exploring the possibility of green burials, which would be a new step for us, thinking of that more for the Old Johnson property, the 85 acres that we bought in conjunction with the water department and, and the parks department some time ago. So that would be really where, and that's, we've always only allowed burials from Southampton residents. We might look into then expanding that with all that space, and green burials, which aren't markers, they're not having regular open cemetery, we might be able to bring some more money into the cemetery by opening up that outside of town. That's, that's just something we've chatted about. And we're also going to invite in some representatives from a natural burial group to help us understand the practical and legal ramifications of the process. So we're just starting on that. It's, it's something we're interested in. We really look forward to cooperating with the historical society for their third autumn cemetery walk. So much fun, it's great. And I think it, I think it is good for both the cemetery and the, and the historical society, because everybody gets nice, nice exposure. Okay, long-term issues for the select board consideration. There is, behind the cemetery, where it meets the new property, there is enormous erosion, and it's because of the runoff from the highway that was routed down, and it goes back behind the cemetery, and it's, it's not good. So I'm not clear, because whether this is a town or a state issue, and I wondered, Ed, if you could speak to that at all, as to where the responsibility will lie for working on that erosion problem.
We'd probably have to take a look at where that runoff is actually coming from to determine that.
Okay, it's highway runoff, is where it is coming from, it's the only place it can, we've walked it back, and I'm pretty sure that's.
You'd want to die it to make sure.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah, with a die-in.
And that would be the area, like, in back of Party Patrol? Is that where you're talking about, or?
Yeah, it's in back of Party Patrol. It's, you know, the newest section of the cemetery back there. If you just kind of, you need to scoot around a little bit to the right and down, it's not an easy walk, it's always kind of messy right now, because it's muddy.
Yeah.
But it is, it's right behind there, and it's something we're really going to have to, to look into before the erosion keeps expanding, and that's, that would be a concern. Let's see. So some of the things that we've done, Holmberg &amp; Howe, a survey company from East Hampton that the town has worked with before, and we have worked with before, has produced preliminary mapping and design work for the wooded area in the rear of the cemetery, which abuts Cedarhurst property, so closer to East Street, that's, I mean, closer to High Street, pardon me. I've only lived here all my life. Closer to High Street. It really is the last available space in what we call a center cemetery proper. But we're looking, we're envisioning something a little bit different for it, more of a park-like setting, maybe more just flat stones, you can come in, there'll be benches. And also, there is a rather steep wall there, that we would like to put up a stone wall with places for cremains, ashes. And I think it would, something to extend the life of the cemetery, and it could be very, very attractive and a very pleasant place. It's nice back in there. It's tough to get into right now, because it's overgrown, but we really are looking forward to expanding that, because that's our last place to go before we go up into the Johnson property. And that's going to be huge. That's, that's going to be something. So there are a number of leaning stones, you see them as you drive by. I don't know if you realize this, but a lot of those old leaning stones, only a third of them is above ground, sometimes as much as two-thirds is below, a certain half. So they actually hold better than they, they look like they're doing, but they do need to be straightened. I was at a Memorial Day parade one time, and a little boy was in section two, real old stone, and he was playing with it and leaning against it, and it cracked and fell over. If he'd been on the other side, it would have been terrifying. But I saw it happen, and it was just like, oh my God. It's one of those stones. So those, those repairs, again, they're not covered by perpetual care, and so we need to get funding either from the town, and we also continue to look for funding outside to get them fixed. I can't do that anymore. I used to, used to get out there with a tripod and, and work with Mr. Frary and whoever else is on the committee. That's going to have to be farmed out. And there are many large trees in the cemetery, especially those big oaks in the back, that need a lot of pruning. It's expensive. I look to the select board to give us some support as far as getting that kind of, that kind of money that we're going to need, because if we don't do it, it's going to fall on the stones. And we've been so fortunate, we've had some big trees fall right between ancient stones, and we've, we've been really fortunate. Because cemeteries are a place, I can wane a little, I get it, anyway. Cemeteries, like the town halls, are the first things that are bombed when you go through. Did you realize that? Like Ukraine or Bosnia. I've had a friend from Bosnia, and she lost all her touches with her history, because the first thing they did was bomb the town halls, for all your records, and they bombed the cemeteries. They took away their history. We are so fortunate to have so much history in our cemetery. We've got stories, we've got artwork carved on the stones, we've got history, we've got wild animals going through there. And so I take it very personally, that, but it's.
And you do have, or you've had a, a company come in and do the pruning on the hydranges, right?
They, they had been, we ran into some problems, maybe, maybe Robert can speak best to that, too. People who were underhanded, I should say, and they were really, it was not a pleasant situation to have, have, and also underpaid us. Not that we're looking for much, but they, those stems are very valuable. And if we could.
$10 a stem.
Yeah, yeah. And if we could just get $400, $500, we'd be happy. And again, we put it into the stone recount, that's what we've done in the past, and that's all used up. Is there anything else you want to say about why we're not using them, or doesn't it matter?
That's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're good.
And we, the one that, things that we do need, you asked about tools and resources. We are, back in the 20th century, on this book, I, I have a huge book, and I get calls all the time, from families that are interested in where grandma is, or how many places are left in their lots, or the people who are carving the stones, and they need to know where to put them, or the funeral homes. And I'm dealing with this enormous book, it's, don't drop it on your toes, because it's about six inches thick, and I have to, we really need to be on computer. We, we need to have this information. I'd like to be able to have the information available outside for people, so they can, they can just look it up on the town website. It should be as transparent as possible, that this information's there.
Is that something you've had a chance to talk about with the CPC committee? I mean, that sounds like a historical purpose.
You mean the CPA?
Community preservation?
Yeah.
Is that something you've approached them with?
I haven't approached them with that one. I guess, I think, because it's so modern that it's, but perhaps it would work, yeah.
Sounds like it could be a historical fit.
The library did something similar.
Yeah, I was going to say, the library did a lot with digitizing their records.
Well, good, well, I will maybe make two grants, just proposals to them.
It might be worth at least a conversation with Virginia or the, or the board, or the committee, rather.
To start with, because that, it's going to be an enormous amount of input that has to go into there.
Yeah.
But, so we'd need some help with that, too, because, is there anything else I can answer, any questions, or Robert?
No, I think that's, I don't have any other question.
No, I just, the, I know you use a private contractor when you have to open up the grave, but you, you are charging for the plots, right?
Of course.
And that money's going into the perpetual fund.
Yeah, when people buy a lot, they're $600 per lot.
And the funds go into the perpetual accounts.
Some, it's split between two, two accounts. One is called the cemetery, the sale of cemetery lots account, and the other one is the perpetual funds. But we take that $600, and we split it between the, between the two.
And what would you say your, your current, according to the website, which might be outdated, you're at about 85% capacity on center?
More.
Right.
Unless we, until we open up this newest section in the back, we're, we're more than that. We, we have only, we've opened up the, the far side of the road from the newest sec, but that newest section that you, when you drive down in the back, and they've got quite a few stones, that's completely sold out. So that's why we're, we're really dealing with a little under the gun here, to get it.
And just one question, has the, the cost of the plot, is that changed over time? Is that a?
Oh, yes, yeah, it, it went up. Boy, do we sell a lot when we let them, let the world know that we were raising the price to $600. We sold a lot at 450. It was a big.
So that's been a recent increase somewhat?
Yeah, about five or six years ago, was it? Maybe longer, maybe longer.
All right, yeah, Rini?
Hi, Judith, I just want to remind you that the articles for the warrant for this upcoming town meeting are due by April 6th.
Okay.
So in terms of the requests that were mentioned, it's pretty quick.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to ask is, it must be close to when Gilher Enterprises will be putting the sidewalk there. How close is it to the fence? Does anybody know?
They've, I've not had, talked with them about it. All I know is that all of a sudden, it's going to be there, and supposedly, they're going to make it so that the water will run away from the fencing.
Fence, right, correct.
That's very important, yeah.
In most of the places, it'll be down close to the fence, except for where you get out to the telephone pole and the tree, it'll be out closer to the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when is that starting?
Soon as the asphalt plants open up.
Okay. So hopefully, in the coming, coming month, hopefully in April sometime, some of that should start with, with that, yeah. And another thing, too, we haven't, we'll be talking about later tonight, is just about the, the American Rescue Plan funds. There might be some possibilities, too. The application is out on our town website, you might take a look at that and see if there's anything that might fit, I don't know, if it could or not, but.
It's worth looking at, yeah.
See, all right. See, all right.
Thank you, Chris.
Good, thank you. All right, appreciate it. Great to finally catch up with you. I know we've been trying for a couple of times, so I'm glad we could make it. All right. Next, we have assessors, April or whomever, Dave? All right, good.
Good evening.
Hi.
Dave Arnold, Board of Assessors. So I don't know if you have our report yet, but I'll, I'll read from it.
But yeah, just go ahead and read it. I don't think we had it in our packet.
We don't have it already. Our current priorities and activities, our top priority right now is to hire a full-time assessor.
Right.
We've been nine months without an assessor and it's been a very difficult time, so that becomes our top priority. We'll be amending our fiscal '23 budget request to increase the salary range. The current wage amount has not resulted in any applications in the last nine months. We're going to be signing a contract with an outside vendor to help with inspections and data entry for fiscal year '22. The vendor cost will stay within our fiscal '22 budget and help our short-staffed office. For personal property, we've reviewed our current list and added a significant number of business accounts, which have been verified by the Board of Assessors inspections over the last three months. Personal property forms of lists, lists have been mailed and returned. Not all of them, but a lot of them have been returned and are currently being processed. The board expects a significant amount of new growth with the amount of businesses that we've discovered over the last three months.
Sorry, these are, these are some that just had not been on the list previously or had not been known of, is that it?
Just not on the list.
Yeah.
We currently, I went through the whole list. I got in the car, I went down to one end of the town and I drove to the other end of town and added other areas.
Great.
We're currently reviewing and processing the fiscal '22 real and personal property abatement applications. We should be completed with that in the next few weeks. And we're continuing to stay current with the assessor workload. The board is jumping in and doing different things to help out, just to keep our head above water at this point. Budgeting, we're, we're continuing to stay within our budget. There will be a need to transfer from the principal assessor wage line to the assistant assessor wage line towards the end of the fiscal year to cover the additional hours being worked to help in the office while we are without a principal assessor.
Thank you.
We'll also be transferring funds from the principal assessor wage line to a vendor line item to pay for the additional help we're hiring for site inspections, data updates that are required by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The board is concerned that in order to attract a qualified candidate for the principal assessor position, we need to have a higher wage. Again, we've gone nine months, no applications. Personal staffing updates, if I haven't mentioned this, we've had no applications for the full-time position and that is a big concern of ours. Our interim assessor is working about 10 to 15 hours a week, which we are very grateful for, and we hope he will continue doing this for us. We're not sure how long he'll be doing it, but we're hoping he'll continue until we can get a principal assessor. We do want to thank our assistant assessor, Janine Damina, who's agreed to work additional hours to help us keep the office running. She's been amazing and very helpful to keep this, again, as I said, just keep our heads above water while we don't have an assessor. There has been a suggestion that we explore the possibility of hiring an outside vendor to do the principal assessor work. Would Southampton residents be happy with a virtual assessor situation? Would the company serve the town better than a principal assessor who works in the town and knows the town and the residents? There's pros and cons to this and we're, right now, we're researching that option right Plans and events for the next four to six months. Begin the process of updating values for the upcoming fiscal year 2023 year. The board continues to work at restructuring the principal assessor duties and the assessor's office to streamline efficiencies and updating our outstanding building permits, get those Long-term issues for the select board to consider, consider competitive wages for the department. Placing more importance on our finance team. Give regular credit to the town employees in all departments for the good work that is done. Suggested tools, resources to help or do our job more efficiently. The assessor's department could use some technology tools to help the assessors do a better job and to actually improve efficiency in the assessor's office. There are software programs, imagery, GIS that is out there that assist the assessor in saving time in going out in the field where they can be behind the desk, available for people who come into the office and do the job much more efficiently with modern Equipment in the office, if we were to do some technology additions would need to be upgraded, this would be a very minor cost of a few thousand dollars capital investment. That's what I have. Any questions?
Okay. Questions, yeah.
So I just want to confirm because it, it sounds right. Set the wage issue aside.
Sure.
Right. The staffing of the office, if the position was filled, do you think is adequate with the principal assessor and the assistant with the hours if everything was typical?
I believe it's a little short. We had an assessor that was 31 hours a week, keeping up with the administration portion of it. I believe 40 hours a week would be able to get out and few more properties, few more personal property. Growth is a huge thing in any town in Massachusetts. And if the assessor is doing administrative work, they just can't get out there. So I think we're looking at trying to get a 40-hour-a-week position and keep the administrative assistant or the assistant assessor hours about the same. But we're looking at different options because right now we're attracting no one. So we're looking at the different options to try to staff that office the best we can.
And you're, you're, the last thing on the technology upgrades that you indicated would permit efficiency and then in theory potentially catch more or be more timely,
right? And reporting which therefore would drive revenue, adequate revenue, right, up if you're
able to identify it. Have you thought about, has the board thought about applying under the ARPA funds for one-time funds for technology enhancements? And if so, if not, I would encourage you to do that. But I think the lingering question behind that would be, it'd be good to know what the recurring annual fees are. Like I know there's a permitting software that the building commissioner uses that has a yearly fee that goes with it. Having those two pieces at the same time would be good.
Yeah, I, I think what we need to do at this point, if time gives us right now because we're kind of underwater, is to start interviewing some of these companies, find out the cost, the licensing fees. And also, we have not looked into ARPA that I'm aware of, but it's, we will. And also there's sharing of other departments. I know many towns with GIS, with imagery, share the cost with building departments, police departments, fire departments, et cetera. So we want to look into that to share.
Okay. There's a couple of things I think that have come up during our Cost Efficiency Committee meetings, talking about that, and I'm glad to hear that you're, you're looking at, at all the, the issues around, you know, capturing all the businesses in town and being sure that we've got those listed correctly and, and, you know, whatever threshold that is that they need to deal with in terms of a personal property tax, that you're looking at that more closely. One of the things that have been talked about, I think with the permitting software, there is some already online, obviously with the building inspector, but there has been some talk about trying to see if that could be broadened, expanded a bit to cover other departments because it may be something that we can reduce the manual part of signing off on everything that has to go from, could be planning board, building, board of health, you guys, et cetera. So there's, there's things that are being talked about at the Cost Efficiencies Committee that we haven't come to any conclusion yet, but just to say that we're aware of, of those kinds of options, but.
Yeah, just speaking of permitting software, the, the software that we're using in the assessor's office has imports for permitting software out there and most towns are using that. Right now, we're manually entering those permits into the CAMAS system, which takes a lot of time. And that should be an import from a permitting system, which, as I say, hundreds of towns that use the software that the assessors are using, use this. So it's something that.
Do you have an idea of the cost offhand?
The permitting, there, for the, I don't know the permitting software, but the system already has the ability to import standard imports and any modifications are, they're not that much. It's a couple hundred dollars of programming.
Okay. And I'd like to suggest that if the application for ARPA funds doesn't work, you might want to consider, and I think a deadline might be coming up soon to apply to the Capitol Committee, if, if the cost is in excess of $5,000, if you anticipate that. That might other be, that might be a source also.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. And I, I do want to comment on, you know, the, the identification of additional personal property. I had a call from someone who had been in business since 1995 and this was the first time he had ever been contacted about personal property.
I, I looked at the list myself, got in the car and found a lot, so.
Would they be interested, interested in a back tax?
But anyway.
Deal on the interest.
People were just unaware, yeah. It wasn't that anyone was trying to avoid.
Yeah, it's really, part of the assessor's office to discover and list is our primary function and that's what we're doing right now. On, you know, we're going to continue doing it and look at the lower hanging fruit right now.
Sure.
And continue finding more.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are really on the front end of our, of our financial formula, shall we say, in terms of bringing revenue into the town.
Yeah, I've read the reports and I'm happy to answer any questions to that committee if there are some.
Yeah, okay. Anything, yeah, really.
I just want to commend the Board of Assessors for the work they're doing in the absence of a principal assessor, but Dave, Darcy Gasperini and April West have been doing a wonderful job. So I hope that folks can support getting somebody that's qualified, that can really bring in the money that's intended to be brought in for the town.
Thank you.
Just one last question I had, the, the contract with an outside vendor to help with inspections and data entry, that's something that hasn't happened before? This is a new, new thing that you would be doing or you have had?
No, we, we've used a vendor before for, what we're looking at now is what's called cyclical inspections, where required by the Department of Revenue to review properties every nine years. They've been doing this for the last, I think, two years, but we're falling behind. And we do have some money that we can use because we're doing the work of the principal assessor.
Right.
That can catch us up. And those cyclical inspections, if we review them properly, will go in its growth for anything we find. So there's a lot of stuff out there and they'll go house to house for, we're looking at possibly 400 properties to review.
Wow.
So.
Okay. Well, thank you for, thank you, your report and all your, your energy and sticking with it. I know it's not, not easy to working without the principal assessor and thank you all for stepping up and filling in. Yeah, April.
I have a question.
Sure, come on up.
I don't want to breach any open meeting laws, but I do have a question for the Board of Select.
Just introduce yourself.
April West, 54 Strong Road. Would you prefer to have a person in the office as a principal assessor or would you like to have a company do that, a vendor and a virtual assessor? Just, just throwing it out there because we'd like to know where to expend our energies. Thank you.
Okay, something I think we can discuss. We may not have an answer tonight, we might have to think about that a little bit.
I can just, for my, my own historical knowledge, I've been treasurer in two other towns that have used outside sources and they usually cost as much, if not a little bit more than having an actual body in the office. And then getting changes or getting our timelines met, you become in the pecking order of who the bigger community is.
Somebody else.
And to your point, you lose the personal touch.
Yeah, I think the personal touch has always gone a long way in, in town hall with the assessor's office in particular.
The personal knowledge also of the.
Exactly.
Just the town.
Yep, okay. All right. Good, thanks Dave and everybody, appreciate it. All right. Okay, moving on. Next one, I think, Town Accountant, Bradley.
Hi, I'm Bradley Axon, the Town Accountant. I joined on September 27th, 2021 and Ellen, the Assistant Town Accountant, joined a week after I did. So we are approaching our six-month anniversary of being here. I just want to take a moment to thank everybody, the select board for approving me, all the help from everyone in the town hall, especially Ed and Jen, and of course Ellen for helping me getting through this and learning so much. No one's yelled at me yet and I've only raised my voice to scammers on the phone so far, so. I know it's inevitable, we're going to get crazy at the end of the year, but we're doing well, in my opinion, and I'm feeling the job is fulfilling. I'm learning a lot and feeling I have an impact on the town, so I'm not ready to leave yet, so.
Good to hear.
All right.
So, current activities, at the moment, the biggest thing we're focused on is fiscal year 2021 closing that. So we have a specialist Lisa helping us and she's looking through the accounts, she's contacting me, she's contacting Jen, she's contacting Ed and trying to get answers so we can fix these numbers and then move on to fiscal year '22, then move on to fiscal year '23. So I'm helping her find old invoices, documents, reimbursement requests and all these other asks and I'm reaching out to other people when I don't have the answers, sometimes Ed, sometimes Jen, sometimes other department heads. And I'm lending her my computer, she's remote access logging in, so I'll have to give up my computer. I can use Ellen's computer in the interim, but I'm happy to give it if she knows what she's doing. This week, Ellen and I are at UMass for the MAAA accounting classes. So Ellen is on track one, so it's very introductory, introductory courses of learning about municipal accounting responsibilities, setting up accounts, very basic, but she's learning a lot, she's telling me she's enjoying it and I'm going to speak with her, speak with her this week to see what her takeaways are. I'm learning more intermediate type things, track one, two, three, and track four, the people that have licenses. So I'm taking mostly track two, learning about laws, enterprise funds, enterprise accounts, closing the books, capital, capital projects. And so I'm learning a lot, I'm enjoying hearing the stories of the people in other towns. Usually it'll just be someone in the class raising their hand saying, I town had this problem, and the instructors will talk and see how they resolve that issue. So that's most of my notes, they mostly have slides that have the bullet points of what they're trying to teach us, but the instructors give more context and give us stories of why, like practical examples of what this is. So, learning, I have one more half-day tomorrow and I'll be back in the afternoon to the town hall. And so tentatively, next year, I would plan to take these exams, there's a legal portion and then like a journal entry practical exam and you have to pass both to be fully licensed. So I'm going to take, Vicki Morrow, the former Town Accountant, recommended the Abrams Groups, they have a boot camp that would really help with the journal entry portion, so I'll probably look into that. And then maybe some other classes in the fall, just to prepare myself because I know I have the three years before I need to get that license. So don't want to procrastinate, I'm not a procrastinator. So last real thing I'm focused on is monthly reconciliations. So they haven't been done in a while and once fiscal year '22 has been cleaned up, I want to make sure fiscal year, I mean fiscal year '21, so fiscal year '22, I want all those reconciliations to be ready. So I'll work with Lisa to make sure I'm doing proper practice and looking at the right accounts. All right, for our budgets, I'm working with, I sent out all the budget files to the department heads and they've responded back to me and I'm relaying them to Vicki Morrow, the, of the Finance Committee. And so the accounting budget, usually it's for classes to pay for our education to learn about accounting, or it's to pay for an outside vendor to help us with accounting. So I'm going to have to talk to Ed about our budget, make sure it's, seems right, because I don't want to go over budget, of course. Staffing updates, Ellen and I are in the office and nothing's a problem yet, so let you know if there's any issues, but currently none. Plans for the next four to six months, so, four to six months, we'll be closing the books for fiscal year '22 and then moving into fiscal year '23. So going to try my best, be prepared for that and have all my notes from my classes, get ready. I want to become more comfortable with the budget input, so budget process is still ongoing for fiscal year '23, I want to know that, know how to input the budgets into the software so it shows up on the reports properly. And one more thing is the accounting office. So when I joined in September, there was a lot of papers all over. I gradually started moving them to more proper areas of the office. I want to really organize and make sure I know where all the grant files are or where all these other reports are. I want to know exactly where they are so I don't have to go looking for them every time someone needs something. And I have found that we have a destruction permission for council payroll warrants from fiscal year 2010 to fiscal year 2016. And we're running out of drawer space for upcoming warrants, so we'll look into getting rid of those or properly storing them elsewhere. So, long-term issues. So the issue of if there was an accountant that left their job and then no one is there to fill that position or interim people, I think we need accounting policies and procedures in place. So when someone is here that is unaware of all the processes, that they have documentation to follow. So when someone is here that is unaware of all the processes, that they have documentation to follow, step-by-step things. My previous job, they really focused on that, to make sure anyone off the street could do your job. It's, sometimes people don't look forward to do that and they don't want to feel special, that they're the only one that knows how to do the job. But when you have proper documentation, everyone feels better of any issues. You just go to your documents and follow step by step, see all the screenshots of every screen that you need. And yeah, follow one, step one, step two. And it prevents tasks from being neglected. So you have all your processes documented. You have them all in your hand and you know, okay, I've done this process, but there's this process. Look at that. Oh, I haven't done that yet. So, excuse me. So for suggested tools, resources, I would want to look into getting a mentor. So I know there's a process of, I don't know if it's applying or just reaching out and getting someone that is a town accountant elsewhere in the state that uses a similar software, just a reference that you can call and ask for any issues. In my classes, they've noted that your DOR representative is someone that you can always call. And they will give you feedback and help you out when you have issues. So that's also someone I could talk to. And just one little thing is transitioning to digital documents whenever possible. So just cut down on having to find one old invoice, just searching for something on your computer. Having a vendor ID code or something and just typing it in and finding it would save some time, make everyone happy. Any questions?
Good, thanks.
I just wanted to ask, how close are we to finishing up fiscal year 2021?
From Lisa, I believe she's on track and she wants to be done by the end of the month so she can submit the Schedule A. Because she's working, closing the fiscal year 21 and doing Schedule A at the same time. So I'm hearing that she's still on track. I'll regroup with her this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Bradley, before you started, I was in contact with the auditor in East Hampton. And she had mentioned that there was mentorship free available and it was through the state. I don't know if, you know, that's true or not. I don't know if you're aware of that, but.
Yeah, I believe it's right through the Auditors and Accountants Association.
Yeah. Is that a possibility for assisting Bradley?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds like that would be a good idea, just to have somebody else that you can call on and just compare notes with and figure out if you're on track or not. But I also like your idea, though, of trying to figure out how to better organize things and have an idea of something written down so that anybody, I mean, I would not want to take on your job by any means, but I mean, anybody that could take a look at, you know, here are the steps. If I had to, you know, get everything ready for the warrant, you know, both of us, I used to sign and now Francine signs the weekly warrants. You know, what are the steps necessary? And I think that that kind of roadmap, you know, in some sort of a handbook type thing, I mean, to the extent, I don't know when you'd ever have time to put that together. But that kind of a thing, I think, could be a very useful tool for just to have in terms of documentation, one way or another.
I'm a bit of an obsessive person of, okay, I need to document every part of this process and what could go wrong. So I have to really think of every mistake I've ever made and document that. So, and I've been told I'm very good at documenting because I'm step by step. And certain wording, I don't want to reuse words over and over. I don't want to start a sentence over with the same word over and over. So it takes me a little while, but they come out very high quality.
Good. All right. Any other thoughts, comments?
I just want to see you back here another six months.
Yeah. Well, we'll be looking to see everything you've learned in the next six months, right? Good. No, thank you. And thank you to Ellen as well. And glad you're attending these classes and hope that proves to be a good learning experience and you can actually put that into, into practice. I think that's the key, is not only going to classes, but having something practical that you can actually implement pretty soon after you get back to your job. So thanks for that, Bradley. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, the last quarterly report, treasure collector, Jen Day.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
We finally got to you. Go ahead.
All right, so under current priorities and activities, you know, as Bradley said too, right now our top priority is working with the fiscal year, closing fiscal year 21 with the auditor. At this point, I believe, well, at this point, I know the cash is balanced. The debt payments are all balanced. Statement of indebtedness is all set. We're still working on, in a small variance, and in the employee dental. And then balancing out the rest of the tax and water receivables. So although my office did balance those all throughout fiscal year 21, they were never actually balanced to the general ledger. So it's a lot of, a lot of work going back and doing that now. Also, let's see. Besides that, right now we're doing, this is like a super busy time for collections. You know, we just issued over 8,000 motor vehicle excise bills that now we're collecting and posting. Shortly after that, I think March 10th, we printed, issued, and issued, you know, over 1,600 water bills. So now those payments are also coming in. And then by March 31st, we'll have to send out all the real estate and personal property bills. So it's just like a super busy time as far as that goes, where, you know, pretty much keeps everyone in the office busy, you know? I mean, there's also reporting going on that we're doing right now, the continuing disclosure. Really, that was due February 15th, but you need financials from 21 to submit with it. So I can't submit it until we have those. What other, I didn't write down the reports. I just put reporting because I figured I would remember them, you know? Let's see. Oh, well, the town report, working on that. I did the portions of it that I was able to do without the 21 numbers. So I can't complete them all without those numbers. Let's see. So budget spending status concern. So as far as my budget goes, my only concern right now is the unemployment line. So that line is 100% spent and we have $2,300 outstanding in unemployment cost. So Ed will have to probably put that for town meeting for a transfer. Plus maybe additional to get us through the rest of the year, if, you know, anyone else. It's really slowed down now, but it was busy during COVID times.
I was gonna say, were these positions from COVID or were?
Mostly, and you know, and some of it's fraud, but they still make you, they're not, you still have to pay that as of now. Like, there's still billing for it. And it's been reported as fraud, you know, but I don't know why. Ed and I have talked about it. And I'm not sure what will happen with that going forward, but.
Hopefully at some point they will actually refund it, but it has been very difficult.
Yeah, so, but there was a lot of fraud with unemployment, you know?
In general, I mean, not.
Oh, for everyone, not just us, yeah. Like every municipality, even private businesses. So, yeah. So personnel staffing updates. So staffing wise, it's been, we've actually been shorthanded for quite a bit for the last couple of years. We had lost, well, right when COVID, the emergency happened, we were only able to have one person in the outer office at a time. So for all of those weeks where we were short, you know, a full position. You know, once they came back, we then lost Robin in October 2020. And then the position wasn't replaced until 21. And unfortunately Tracy started and then, you know, she left in December, not even a year. So we're lucky that we have Robin in the office now, filling in for the 15 hours per week, so that helps a lot. But, you know, hopefully we'll be able to fill that other position. I did have two applicants. So we'll see. I haven't had anyone new apply since the last time we talked about it. But, so it's still the same two.
Have you had a chance to interview yet or not yet? Or you're waiting to?
So that's a whole other story, but, yeah.
Waiting to get others.
Yeah. So plans, events for the next four to six months. I just put to hire an employee for the vacant position. You know, well, I mean, there's many things we'll be doing, but along with whatever else we do, we'll be doing, like the quarterly reports will all be due. Open enrollment will begin in May for health and dental insurance. And the new plan will go in effect on July 1st. You know, we still have to, I will, like, we do have to borrow for the East Street Bridge still. We're kind of waiting again. It's the same thing. We need financials from 21. So they want to see like the, at least the unaudited balance report. So, you know, so once that's done, hopefully when that's done at the end of March, all that can happen. For long-term issues, for select board consideration, all I like really put there, and I've said this before, was financial software. So we're not, you know, triple entering, just to make things more efficient. And then, and I know this is, you know, hopefully going to be worked on if there, we do get a shared human resource position. But definitely a classification and compensation plan that can be followed because for the whole town, you know, not, or not just my office. But so we can keep people on board, you know? That's all I had, short and sweet.
Questions? Anybody offhand? Nobody? Quiet? Yeah, quiet. I think one of the things, in terms of the financial software, again, this is another issue that's been talked about a little bit.
Yeah.
While you were there, at the Cost efficiencies meeting. I know there's a couple of companies that are possibilities.
Yeah.
And we've started at least reaching out and hopefully we can figure out what makes the most sense for what we have. Whether we upgrade the current system or we get a different, you know, financial software system. But I think we're totally in support of the idea of doing less manual, everybody touching every piece of paper. The more we can automate some of these functions, I think it can't help but be, you know, a cost savings as well as, you know, more efficient in terms of people's time.
Yeah, definitely.
So totally, totally support that.
Likely of errors because the more people enter the same information.
Oh, definitely.
And I would venture that's a part of some of the work that you and Bradley have probably been having to do with Lisa is to sit down and make sure that some of the account numbers have been correct. I mean, somebody can just simply transpose a number or, and then you've got everything that you can't find, right?
Yeah, transpose, transpose a number or amount. So maybe it's done one way on my side and then it's a different number on the other side. So doesn't all just feed in all the time.
And I don't sign the warrants anymore. Francine does. But I mean, I remember looking at payroll in particular. And, I mean, honestly, the job that the departments do in terms of their manual nature, I'm thinking police and fire in particular.
The lines, there's a lot, yeah.
Incredible amounts of, you know, different categories of wages that have to be allocated and so forth. And to have some software that could help everybody would be incredible. So I think that would be a fantastic idea. And hopefully you can move forward too with finding the right kind of person to come into your office and.
And changing the timekeeping system. I mean, automate that where people can allocate their time directly into whichever category it fits. You know, overtime versus.
Detail, police detail or something like that.
That will save a lot.
That might help too. Yeah, so, no, we appreciate, and I think we probably don't even have a clue in terms of the amount of work that goes on in your office. I mean, everybody's always so attentive and welcoming, but I'm sure there's a whole lot more that happens behind the scenes that we don't even know about, so.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes on. I mean, yeah, we, we do do a lot. We, I mean, we work with every department. We're involved with every department in some kind of way, you know? And then we work with so many outside agencies also, like, yeah, we're busy, definitely.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions?
So Jen, are you putting forward through finance, through the budget process, the restructuring of your office? Or is that, you talked about it before and now the window's coming up?
But like I.
Are you putting it on pause?
I put it on pause because, yeah. So.
Well, I think that, you know, that's part of the challenge too. I think we had talked about that even, even last year of just the amount of hours and, you know, what's sufficient for any office. And including what we just asked the assessors, you know?
Yeah.
With the kind of work that you've got to do and the number of bodies that you have, the kinds of work that everybody has to do. You know, we obviously, I think I would like to see that everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing for their skill level or whatever. I mean, to have, you know, you doing admin work doesn't make sense, you know?
Yeah, but I know.
You're probably having to fill in the blanks.
And a lot of other departments already where we have like, you know, even chiefs doing payroll and, you know, entering their own payroll. So we can see that, but it's, it's happening quite a bit already.
Well, and I think that's part of the impetus too. When we started out, what, six months ago, more than that, eight months ago, when we talked about, you know, priorities for select boards for this year. I mean, the financial health of the town, you know, was undoubtedly the number one priority. And that's why through the Cost efficiencies committee, we're trying to figure out if there are ways that we can figure out better revenue and/or cost savings so that we can, you know, attract and retain qualified people. I mean, that's, that's a challenge for South Hampton and many other communities, but it's certainly forefront in terms of our intentions, so.
And I think with everybody waiting until the close of the fiscal year 21, I mean, I feel strongly that if there are funds that can qualify for ARPA funding for, it seems like everyone needs to get over a hump with a lot of back work that's being upheld. You know, please consider applying because I think we don't want this, we want everybody to get caught up.
Yeah, it's pretty behind right now.
It's very difficult to have happen.
It is.
All right. If nothing else, thank you very much for coming, Jen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Lucy, what, yeah, can't hear you.
Lucy, 10 Strong Road Town Clerk. You said we didn't start paying for the bridge yet, correct?
We haven't borrowed.
We haven't borrowed yet. So when we start to borrow, is that when our taxes are gonna go up or our taxes are not going up?
So the taxes, depending on when the borrowing happens, so as long as it happens before, to be able to get on as a debt exclusion, as long as it happens before April, should I say September, October, the borrowing, right, to go on as a debt exclusion?
As long as it happens before November.
November, okay, okay. So, so there's time. And then the, yeah, so the. Fiscal year 23, actual taxes. Yes.
Probably be felt then. Okay. Good. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, guys. Good. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, so we are through our various reports here. Let's jump on to town administrator report. Ed?
Sure. Just to let you know, on the East Street road design, we've been informed that the tip will no longer allow projects to be split into two phases to be considered at one time. And the current estimate of the construction for the entire length of East Street is between 12 and 15 million dollars. That would be too large a project for the tip to consider doing in one year of funding. However, VHB is going to work on some conceptual models and cost estimates for us, which rather than going from Route 10 to Strong Road in one phase and Strong Road to County Road in another phase, are gonna look at going from basically Route 10 to Whispering Meadow on East Street in one phase. And then alternatively, look at both other funding sources and the tip in future years for doing the Whispering Meadow to County Road portion. And one of those other alternatives will be the federal infrastructure program. But from what VHB tells us, the sweet spot for a project is somewhere around 6 million dollars. And that's what they're thinking that the, from going from Route 10 to Whispering Meadow at this time would approximately be in that range. But they're gonna run a number of different options for Randall and I to go over.
Can I just ask a question about that? So right now we were slated to get four or nine for that project.
Right.
So they're proposing that there'd be a $5 million price tag. Would that come from the? Would that come from the TIP funding?
The entire length would be 12 to 15 in today's construction dollars.
Right, but you just said, you just said that, that VHB said that 5 million is...
6 million is the sweet spot.
And does that mean that there, we're going to hope to get an additional 1 million from TIP funding?
Yes, we'll be looking to get the funding for doing, all the way from Route 10 to Whispering Meadows.
Okay.
Yep.
I just don't want to be in the same boat we were in with the East Street Bridge.
Yep.
That's all.
Yep, gotcha.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Next, since we have a discrepancy between the wage scale, which was traditionally been used by the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board, and the classification and wage scale, which was developed and proposed under the Jacob study in 2017, I would like to recommend that the Select Board and PPPB have an independent third-party look at these two plans in comparison, and present an updated classification and compensation plan for consideration to be adopted. I would recommend using ARPA funds to have this comparison and update performed. And then, we do have a request for qualifications for on-call engineering service, which is currently out, and will allow the town to choose engineering services from various different disciplines going forward. This RFQ should cover needs for road, traffic improvements, bicycle and pedestrian paths, splash pad design, as well as water, sewer, and stormwater engineering services, and help with grant, um, grant responses. The responses are due back on April 4th, and then will need to be evaluated, and then recommendations will be made to the Select Board. And then upcoming Select Board meetings, next one, March 29th, April to be determined, and the annual town meeting on Tuesday, May 3rd.
Okay. Questions, or, John?
Well, just on 1B, I guess, I don't know what the committee thinks, but PPPB is meeting Thursday night, so I could bring this up. I did have a quick call with Ed earlier today on this, and I have no objection to it, but I don't want to speak for the committee, so bring to them. But I, I would say that if, there's no objection here, that I could bring it back to PPP, and that committee could fill out the application and submit it. And I, to be, to clarify, I think the wage study would be for any compensated employee within the town that is not covered by either a collective bargaining agreement or an employment agreement. So that would encompass the two compensated elected officials who seem to be out there in limbo land, because they don't fall under PPP.
Right.
And, you know, maybe even it's a silo, do the wage study, or whatever it is. But whether, whether we can fulfill it afterwards is a different story. But I'd be in favor of doing this and refer it to the committee, and if the committee agrees with me, we can author it and send the application through for consideration.
Just a point of clarity, fill me in a little bit more on terms of the, the shared HR resource, that that's nothing that can be done?
It, it's, it's on their agenda to, as one of the services we can, we can request, but I, I would support doing it this way, just simply because I think that's going to be so protracted, that we're not going to get that information for quite some time.
It won't be timely, and I...
I think we need it sooner rather than later. And I'm talking about, they haven't even completed the study yet. They haven't even written their report. I mean, there's, there's a ways to go. I would think we're a year off.
Yeah, I think the shared services eventually, Chris, will be, here's our document, could you go update it?
Yeah, yeah.
And then keep it kind of a living document every year. I think we need to do, we need to do our piece now, if we want to have it in time for the budget session.
Yeah, right, right.
Yes.
If at all possible.
And so you're, you're seeing this as a comparative study, and rather than, I mean, I just don't want us to repeat the whole Jacob study, right? I mean, we're...
Right.
We're not doing that. You're comparing it with the current wage scales that are being used.
Correct, and then they'd probably have to do some comparisons as to what the current market is out there, but I think that's, I think that's the best way to go about having this done, and coming out with, like I say, an independent third-party comparison of the, of the two, and what makes sense.
Let me just say that the information in the Jacob study was updated by Art Lawrence in 2020. He recalculated, he, he researched the current salaries at that time in other towns and our own, and then put, you know, updated that scale from 2017. So we're not as far behind on, on, on that, so that'll save the consultant some time.
Okay, ready?
So would we use the same company that did the Jacob study?
No.
So we would hire someone to take the existing Jacob study and update it?
Well, that and comparison to the existing classification plan and charts that PPP is using. So both of those.
I don't understand what the deliverable will be.
The deliver will be one updated...
Wage scale.
Wage scale and classification plan.
With supporting documents to justify the numbers.
So, so it's not updating the, the Jacobs report per se, but it's taking the tables that they've put in there for wage, minimum, whatever they were, I'm forgetting, minimum...
Medium and high.
Higher, whatever.
Comparing, comparing that, those to the, the scales that PPP has been traditionally using for I don't know how long, yes. And coming out with one, one, one plan from that information.
We definitely need to merge those two. It's been parallel universes in some way.
Correct.
It's already March, like, the warrants due, articles are due, like, how fast can this get done?
Well, it's not going to get done for that, but it's still something we need to do and move forward with.
Right. How hard do you think it's going to be to find an independent third-party to do this? Are there, do we know of groups that are up there?
Collins Institute.
That's who I'm going to recommend. We can do it under an intermunicipal agreement.
Okay, yeah, I've seen some of their work.
And chairs are, they already have a lot of this data.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's quite true.
Probably, right.
And honestly, they do a lot of work in this area, so they may have access already to a lot of this data. They would just be compiling it on our behalf.
Yeah.
I would not remove contracted employees, though. I mean, I would want the comparison.
Well, I mean, we could, yeah, I guess in my mind, I was going more, right, we have that one eight and a half by 11 sheet for fire and EMS, that spells everything out. And then we take the Jacob study, and we take the art, what I know as the Art Lawrence study, and we try to put the two together, but PPP doesn't use the Art Lawrence study, because there's a question of whether or not a vote ever took place.
Right, yeah, so...
And then, and then also think, potentially down the road, we may want to enter, I mean, if I, if this was my company, here's your wage, here's your annual steps, just like we do on the CBA agreements.
Right, yeah.
You know, try to clean this stuff up.
Well, I definitely support that, but my point is that I don't want to exclude positions just because they're contract or elected. I would like to know what is the current...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd want to bring elected in, definitely, because I don't think they're serviced anywhere.
So the one that might be excluded would be the CBAs.
But they were, they were included on, in the, in the Art Lawrence study.
It was very helpful to have what we had voted, the Select Board had voted to use as a guide when we were trying to increase wages last budget cycle. And I like the, the way the Jacob study at least classified the different levels of employees, and it included everyone from, you know, all department heads. So I wouldn't want to exclude anybody from at least getting that information.
And, you know, I think putting in a schedule so that people can envision what their future might look like in five years or 10 years, given, given whatever cost of living increases occur, I, I think that's an important thing.
And then, and then when it does, when the final project comes out, to be crystal clear, that this might be a two, four, six-year process before we can right the ship. It's not going to be, oh, here's the report, and let's straighten everything out.
Yeah, but I think our challenge right now, too, has been that even though we have grades and steps, we, you know, unlike many places where you would work, you would get your normal step increase annually, provided performance was fine, people are kind of put in a, in a holding pattern, I guess I would say, because it all depends on how much we can afford to do for Colas that year, right? So if there's some way to help us get through the fog as well, and see whether we can make that a more legitimate annual expectation somehow, I think that would be a, a challenge for us, but worth, worth looking into more detail.
So, Ed, would you be filling out the ARPA application for that?
Okay.
Yes, I would.
Ed was going to have a lot of ARPA applications to fill out, I think. Okay, so...
I'd take you off your plate.
Can I just say something?
I appreciate it, but it's okay, Jen.
Yeah, go ahead. Can I just say something about, I think that the Select Board has been, you know, pretty supportive of trying to right the ship, as you call it. I think that last year, we tried, we, you know, Art Lawrence had said to us, start somewhere. So I think we started with the lowest paid employees in town. On top of that, gave back-to-back state minimum wage increases, supported the EMTs, going to the, the fire chief, going to the town meeting for that. We had put even more raises into the override, which didn't pass. So, I mean, I've felt, at least for the last couple of years, that this board has been very supportive of trying to raise up wages, and I, speaking myself, I continue to want to do that with the operating budget this year.
Okay. Good. So Jen, did you want us to just basically agree that you should go ahead to bring this forward to PPP, or?
No, if Ed's going to do it, you just took PPP completely out of it.
Okay.
So it will be a resource to whoever's going to come in and do the study.
Yeah, I'll be there Thursday night, so if, you know...
60 minutes. It will be a 60-minute meeting.
If you, if, you know, if you, you get the vote that they are willing to move forward with it, too, that's, that's great.
All right, sounds good.
We'll do it.
Can we look at March, April dates, and do you think it's going to change because of the town meeting?
Yeah.
And the date things leading up to it?
Yeah, we've got, hold on.
Are we ever going to get away from weekly meetings, too, by?
I hope so.
I think we are. I think we're getting close to that.
I think we're getting close. Let's see here, hello, get the right calendar. So we have a meeting already the 29th, then our normal meeting would be, regular Select Board meeting would be on the 12th and the 26th. I guess I'm hoping that, well, first of all, is, would that work for everybody, obviously? Because that's our regular two-week schedule.
12th and 26th.
12th and 26th, are we agreed with that?
Yep.
All right. I'm hoping that, you know, as we get toward a FinCom schedule...
They're meeting Monday night.
Okay. That one of these Tuesdays that we would normally have for an executive board meeting, that we could maybe push off an executive board thing. I think we're pretty close on a lot of CBAs, CBA issues, so that we could forego an executive session on a CBA issue to deal rather with a joint meeting with FinCom, to the extent that we can arrange that. I think we should sort of save those, those dates, or if we have to change the agenda on one of our Tuesdays as well. I mean, it's going to be a little challenging, but we've got to be able to balance budgets and so forth, and we haven't even seen a, a real budget yet, so...
Yeah, I would probably think about doing the 12th and 26th as the regular meeting dates, and then reserving the 5th and 19th, which would be...
The 5th is the town caucus.
Huh?
The 5th is the town caucus.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah. And that's at, what time is that, at 7? 7?
So then I reserve the 19th.
Yeah, we may have to have a couple of days back-to-back or something like we've done in the past, because once FinCom, you know, has some budget information for us, I mean, that's going to take some time to...
Well, I think we should back into it and figure out when we need to have this meeting by, because I'm getting nervous. I don't know what anybody else is.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, we need to know when we're going to see a budget. I mean, last time, we had a lot of problems. We didn't get all the departments in.
We'll get it, we'll, we'll get your draft budget for your next meeting on the 29th.
Excellent.
Okay, okay. And I think we've, we've seen Hampshire Regionals came to us already, and you guys are going to be meeting soon at Norris on your second meeting.
Yeah, our final vote will be on March 30th to meet the April 1st deadline.
Okay, so, yeah.
As far as, just to clarify, Ed, on the draft budget that we're going to see, is that going to be revenue and expenses, or just expenses?
You'll see revenue estimates also.
Okay.
So you can see both sides of the puzzle.
All right, so the 29th, we'll get the draft budget, and then when would we normally want to meet with the Finance Committee then?
Well, as soon as they can figure out a meeting.
That be on the 12th, or is that too late?
Well, we might have to, I mean, depending on their schedule, John, I don't know. They're meeting on Monday.
You might want to try to find a mutual date, that first week of April.
Yeah, I was going to say earlier than the 5th. The in-between week before the, before our normal meeting on the 12th, I was going to suggest the week of the 4th, that we find some time in there for a joint meeting, which would be, the 5th would be our typical Tuesday.
Has Finance met with any departments yet?
I got a text from the Chair that she, the first meeting, she's looking to have the first meeting Monday night. We've only talked via text. I, I don't know who's on the agenda or not, but I blocked it out.
Okay.
And I can talk to them about the first week of April, like, Wednesday, Thursday?
Okay.
Because Tuesday's out of the question, right?
Right, Tuesday's out of the question.
Yep.
So it would be April 7th?
Right. So, yeah, the 7th, yeah, 6th, 6th or 7th would be April 6th or 7th, Wednesday, Thursday, for a joint meeting, maybe. That would be, I mean, I think we need to nail something down, even if we have to do them back-to-back, two nights in a row, that's fine. Yeah, Robert, question, comment?
Robert Floyd, I have you meeting on the 19th, to sign the warrant on the 19th.
The 19th of April.
April.
Whoa.
So I was going to ask if there's any chance that meeting could be via Zoom, because that's school vacation week, and I already had to be here for the February break.
So...
You can meet on another, you can meet on a Thursday, the 21st, but if you're going to be meeting on Tuesdays, then you would need to sign the warrant on Tuesday, April 19th.
And what's the deadline?
The deadline to post the warrant is Monday to 25th.
Is 26th?
Monday to 25th.
Monday to 25th is the deadline to post the warrant.
So we could meet on the, okay, I see what you mean.
I'm going to disagree. I'm going to say it's Tuesday, the 26th, one week before.
We interpreted it differently, but seven days before the meeting.
It has to be posted.
It has to be posted seven days before the meeting, not...
Which is the 26th.
Right, so you keep your decision before then.
Which would be the 25th.
Yeah, it's really close.
Yeah, so we're not going to go that long?
No.
We either do the 19th, or we, we have a meeting on the 21st.
Somewhere on the 21st, perhaps, at the, at the latest there. Okay. All right, well, let's, let's keep those as, as our goalposts here, in terms of having some joint meetings, possibly, April 6th or 7th.
Okay, so I won't, I can't make the 7th, just so you know, if that matters. I have a COA meeting on the 4th.
Okay. We've got a regular Select Board meeting on the 12th and on the 26th, and would hopefully be able to have budget discussions if we need to, you know, change around some things on our meeting for the 12th, to have more, more, you know, you know, have a minimized to have more, more, you know, you know, have a minimized agenda and focus really on the budget for the 12th. I mean, that would be probably what we might have to do, so that we would be able to sign it by the 21st of April and get it posted on the 25th.
Okay.
Okay.
And the town caucus being the 5th, we won't have a select board meeting, so to have a concentrated agenda might be difficult without additional meeting somewhere.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to see what comes up on the agenda. I mean, I'm hoping we can.
Okay.
As much as I think that we don't have things to talk about, we seem to always have things to talk about that, that come, come our way. I mean, there's always.
I know, this was a thin packet. I thought we were.
Yeah, the packet is thin, but don't let it fool you. It's just because there's lots of things to sign and deal with. All right, uh, if we're done with that, um, just add one more thing on Ed's point, I think on the RFQ, I've worked with him a little bit on this, this notion, and I think the RFQ for the on-call engineering services, I think this is gonna be another thing that's gonna help us move along and kind of, um, take a few steps out of the process, because this is gonna help us create kind of a databank in-house of qualified engineering companies in particular, so that when we're ready to do any kind of a project, uh, we've got some people that have already been pre-vetted, and, uh, we can call upon them with an S O W to actually, um, put in a proposal to do the work. So, it's hopefully useful, and have you had any, any real bite on this in terms of the applications, the on-call coming in, asking?
No, I mean, I mean.
Or people are asking for the?
We've already had about 15 requests for the RFQ package itself, so.
Okay, well, that's encouraging. Okay. All right, and they're not due until the beginning of April, you said?
April 4th, at noon.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right, how about some select board reports? Anybody wanna start? Who's ready to roll? John?
PPPB is meeting this Thursday. There's the public meeting or the public hearing on the three proposed changes. It's been posted at least 10 days in advance as required. Uh, the meeting will take no longer than 60 minutes in observance of the holiday. And the, um, finance committee is meeting the following Monday. Hampshire Regional passed their budget. I think that's it.
Okay.
I like that you identified as a holiday. It's a holiday to me, and I appreciate that.
Okay, Francie.
Okay. Uh, the bylaw committee has met twice since the last select board meeting. The drafts of the humane care and treatment of domesticated animals and dog, dog licenses, kennels, and complaints have been posted on the town website, requesting that online comments be submitted by March 28th. A public meeting to gather in-person feedback on those draft bylaws is scheduled for March 31st. It's 7:00 PM right here in this room, and that's also posted on the town calendar. Uh, additional revisions, um, to those bylaws may be made to the final draft based on the resident input before being forwarded to town council and then ultimately, um, to town meeting. The committee will also circulate drafts of two additional bylaws to all town committees requesting feedback on proposed bylaws regarding committee and board membership and participation. The Norris School Committee met on March 9th. At that meeting, they reviewed the preliminary fiscal year 23 budget and scheduled to, to meet on March 30th to approve that preliminary budget. The committee conducted its annual vote to approve, um, the school choice policy. The committee adopted a new donation policy which enables the superintendent to accept monetary and equipment donations that do not exceed $250, and the contributions in excess of $250 are subject to the school committee's acceptance. There was a presentation on the benefits of a proposed neurodiversity program at Norris for the benefit of students with autism and other special needs. In addition to providing equal education for students in their home district, the program will also save money by not having to pay for out-of-school district placements. The feasibility of the program was an integral part of the fiscal year 23 budget considerations. Pauline Webster, a kindergarten teacher, applied for a Smithland Classroom Project grant, and Norris was awarded $1,000 to build a chicken coop so that students can learn the chicken life cycle by hatching eggs. This is an opportunity to introduce academics through nature. Dylan Maudsley, the Norris liaison to the Hampton Regional School Committee, reported that the, the HRHS committee passed fiscal year 23 budget, and it looks like the increase for Southampton is about 1.7%. As everyone knows, four of the five towns in the regional school district must approve the budget before it goes into effect. Talking about the, uh, shared, um, human resource feasibility project, the town administrator, treasurer, and I met with the UMass Collins Center representative that was engaged by PVPC to determine the feasibility of shared resources among, um, the participating towns. The purpose of the meeting was to gather information about Southampton's current human resource structure and processes. The outcome of these meetings will be in a final report that will propose a structure and services that will be offered to participating towns on a shared cost basis. They will include human resource reviews, time studies, updating policies, job descriptions, training on new laws, personnel records. Um, it runs the gamut, but we won't know specifically until the report is completed. And then finally, the Z B A met last evening with a representative of investment real estate from York, Pennsylvania, who is requesting a special permit to expand existing storage facilities on Coleman Road. The facilities will be located in both Southampton and East Hampton. No decision was reached at that meeting, and the meeting will continue next Monday, March 21st.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Uh, Board of Assessors already reported, uh, the updates, and their next meeting is March 28th at 4 o'clock. Council on Aging hasn't met since the last time, and they gave the update tonight, which is basically the forming of the feasibility committee for the building. The CPC met last Wednesday. They reviewed the proposal from the water commissioners to purchase and conserve land on Pappy Meadow Road. Uh, we were joined by Mark Wamsley from Kestrel. The vote from CPC was to support the project in full with or without the water protection grant, and there will be an article to that effect on the upcoming town meeting warrant. There's no upcoming meeting planned for CPC. The Public Safety Building Committee met on the 7th at 4 o'clock. It was a good meeting. Reviewed a lot of the history, um, of the committee, voted officers for the committee, uh, reviewed, um, the charge. Uh, the chiefs, Cindy and I met yesterday to discuss publicity. East Hampton Media will be actually video, videoing both stations, um, for public to be able to see the conditions that they're currently in. Um, let's see, reps from East Hampton Media, including Jeff, who's here tonight, actually joined the meeting. And, uh, Ed and Charlie are looking at the maps in town to look at town-owned land and other parcels within the radius of the town center, and the next meeting is scheduled for the 21st of March at 4 o'clock. That's it.
Great. Good. Glad to see that's gotten off the ground. That's good. All right. Yeah, Joy.
So, um, Conservation Commission met March 7th. Um, they discussed the, what to do with the Manhand Meadow Sanctuary in regards to their trail design. Um, I think they're gonna go forward with designing incorporating the, the, um, the railway, but know that they can't actually use it currently. Um, they discussed with the Fletcher's, the Zip-Top Barn, and getting a new quote for the roof, because that was never completed. I think there was issues last time, um, in regards to the actual structure of the building. So, they're going through that process again. Um, and their next meeting is March 21st, 6:00 PM via Zoom. Housing Authority also met on March 7th. Um, they finalized their housing production plan, and we should be getting a draft out to the public shortly. Um, the Housing Trust Group met this week with MHP, um, and we're getting started on next steps, and we created a timeline, and it's a pretty fast timeline. We hope to have something, not this, uh, town meeting, but the special town meeting.
Nice.
Um, and their next meeting is April 4th. Um, Open Space met on March 10th. They discussed the, um, the grant for the Courtney property, or the property on Pumroy Meadow, um, and how the grant was due this, this week. Um, the Hendrick property donation, they're putting together hopefully a day in April to celebrate. They discussed the pollinator garden that would be on the water commission property. Um, CPC is unable to fund it because it's not for, um, you're not rehabilitating anything, and it's not considered open space. You're not purchasing open space. It's considered like a pollinator garden. So, um, the chair for CPC said that they would not be able to fund it. So, um, Open Space was wondering if they could apply for ARPA funds for it, um, under, you know, environmental, um, protection and, and helping with pollinators and potentially a component of mental health, um, adding that piece. And I, I gave them the information for the application, um, and, and I said, worse comes to worse, they can apply, and, and the select board will discuss it. I think it's, the price tag is $6,000. Um, and their next goal, I mean, their next meeting is going to be April 28th, and that will be an in-person meeting, and that's all.
All right. As you're just following on, I hadn't totally realized the issue with the, um, the pollinator garden, but, um, that was part of, in addition to what Open Space is doing, it tied into what we had signed last year as the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, uh, which was to try and do more education and promote the use of, of, uh, pollinator species in town. And, um, Open Space Committee, along with Concom and Friends of Open Space, were ones that had projects, and that actually, our commitment to that has to be renewed, and so, uh, I was gonna bring that forward at the next select board meeting, where we just have to approve renewing our pledge to the pollinator garden, or pollinator program, uh, through the National Wildlife Federation. So, this may coincide a little bit there, too.
Yes.
Yep. All right, just a couple for me. Uh, Cost efficiencies committee met on March 10th. Uh, we're gonna meet again on March 30th. Uh, we've been exploring a variety of things, looking especially at options, how we could enhance revenue. Uh, one of the things that we had talked about under that, uh, were things that actually, um, the assessors talked about, uh, taking a look at the businesses in town and trying to be sure that we're capturing, uh, all of the relevant, um, personal property tax that are, that might be owed, given the thresholds that are, are established. Um, we've been looking at other ways to do things such as a lease-purchase approach to certain vehicles in our fleet, uh, probably more the police than anybody else, and so far, that has not really proven terribly feasible. It doesn't look like it's gonna be any more cost-effective rather than buying them outright. Um, other things that we've been looking about for cost savings, rather than more increased revenue per se, um, it's from the cost savings viewpoint, is, um, looking at more contract consolidation ideas between the departments and even the school with HVAC and boiler maintenance and repair, uh, having a joint contract, at least between, um, there's, there's several, several entities that may use the same contractor, but they're all on their own kind of contract. So, having a consolidated contract for some of them might, uh, get us some cost savings as well as some better performance. Um, looking at things like, um, consolidated central purchasing of most common office supplies. I'd be broadly sending a note out to all the departments to have them, uh, get back to him with the top 10 supplies that they tend to use. Uh, I think paper, uh, ink and toner, and maybe three-ring binders or something like that came up as some of the top priorities. And so, the idea would be to establish a common vendor list and approved vendor list, so that that would save some time, and every department didn't have to go search and figure out all the quotes and find the right prices when they had to order something, that there would be a few, few common items, uh, that could maybe be purchased, uh, by saying, look, this is the vendor you're gonna use if you need to buy X. Um, Ed cautioned us about doing some bulk purchasing, because we just don't have storage. Uh, that's the challenge when you wanna do bulk purchasing. So, we've looked at a variety of things and are making some progress there. We're gonna be looking at, uh, the possibility for some shared services with other municipalities, uh, and we'll be meeting again on the 30th, as I mentioned. Uh, the grant committee, this is probably the biggest thing that's come up, uh, the, um, M V P action grant application window is now open. It opened up yesterday, uh, and so, this is the opportunity for all municipalities to actually implement their priority climate adaptation actions as they identified in their planning process. Uh, you may remember Southampton went through an M V P planning process, so M V P, um, municipal, um, vulnerability preparedness, uh, process. Thank you. Had to remember that one myself. Uh, it's a mouthful. Uh, went through that process and have our final document issued. Uh, I believe it was in June of 2021, and that is located on the town website, if anybody would like to refer themselves to it. It's under the documents and forms sections. If you scroll down to select board, you'll find it there. There's, um, uh, an Excel sheet of the risk matrix as well as the report itself. Uh, but this grant requires a 25% match. Uh, it's got lots of money available, uh, and it's a matter of trying to find what is the real priority project that we wanna try and hang our hat on and put in an application for, uh, if we're gonna do that. Um, applications are due May 5th, so it's not a long time. It's about a six-week period to pull it together. Um, the grant committee is gonna meet again on the 22nd at 2:30 via Zoom, and we've invited, uh, the highway superintendent, the water superintendent, the police chief, and the E M D to attend so that we can try and look at the report and narrow down priorities and hopefully select a project that's worthwhile to, to apply for. Um, the application is a tough one, so, uh, they do a lot of work with climate resilience tools and all sorts of things that we are not familiar with, but we'll do our best to see what we can pull together. So, uh, that's the biggest thing happening on their grant fund end at this moment. Okay?
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
I thought when we got the assistance of Fosse and O'Neil to actually pull that all together, that part of that included help with the application of the grant for further funding. Is that not true, Ed?
No, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be true. We can reach out to them and see if they've got any ideas, which will probably be helpful.
They helped us finish the planning process, but, you know, out of that, you know, out of the planning process, now there were certain, I mean, there were culverts. There were, you know.
Yeah, I was part of that. It was a great process, actually.
Right, that, that came up on the list, but now we've gotta figure out, okay, which is the one that is really the most important that we can chew off, you know, and try to, try to deal with. So, that's why, hopefully, uh, some of our town experts will join us in the meeting. Uh, we've got a meeting just by Zoom for an hour on the 22nd, I said, I believe.
I would just recommend that maybe Ron Lauren be a part of that, or at least consult with him, because, you know, trees have been a huge problem to our town lately. We just heard from the cemetery.
Yep.
Uh, we had to increase for two years in a row the budget for the tree warden. I just feel like maybe he should be part of it.
Yeah, okay, good point. Yep. Uh, all right, all right, next, let's, yes.
If I could, just mindful of the time, instead of going to old business, could we skip to new business and take up, I think, two items that are holding members of our audience, the precinct change and then the water and superintendent contract?
Sure, that's not a bad idea. I think, I don't know that we have lots to say on some of the old business.
Yeah, Mike, do the annual town caucus warrant also.
Okay. Yeah, let's do, um, the precinct change notice. Is that the one, or the annual town caucus? What do we have?
So, the precinct change is the insert that.
Yeah. They're, they're both on our, on our list, I think, here, so go ahead with both of them.
Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, 10 Strong Road. The, uh, precinct change notice is the insert that I would like you to approve. This is the template that was given to us by the state. Michelle Tascinari, the director, developed this, um, notice for all the municipalities that are changing their precincts. This insert is going into the tax bills, so we can save on postage, and we're gonna put it on blue paper, and it's only gonna go to the residents that the precinct is changing from 1 to 2. So, anybody who is, we've always been in precinct 1, so anybody who's changing from precinct 1 to precinct 2 is gonna get a blue one of these in their tax bill, as long as you approve it.
Remind me, which one is the 2? Is it the 1?
You're in 2. Yeah, um.
2 is east of College Highway.
2 is east, yeah, and 1 is less populated, so, and it just states, I don't know, Ed might have given you a copy, yep.
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 It just states, you know, that they are in precinct 2, their, um, location is the senior center, and so that way, they'll know where they're going.
So, the polling location doesn't change whatsoever?
Yeah, it's this building, but it's just, yeah.
A different room.
Different room.
Different room, okay. But same building.
Does it need a formal vote?
Well, uh. Do you wanna read what it says so that the public can hear?
Sure. It says, "Dear registered voter pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 54, Section 6, the town of Southampton has changed its voting precincts to reflect the population changes as calculated by the 2020 federal census. The next election in Southampton will be the annual local election on May 17th, 2022. Effective December 31st, 2021, your voting precinct is P R. number 2. Your polling location is still Southampton Town, Town Hall, Senior Center, 210 College Highway, and it's my name, Lucille Dalton, and my phone number, and my email, in case anybody has any questions, so. And we're gonna also, you know, do some other, um, notifying of the residents. We're gonna put a press release in, um, I think in the Gazette and the reminder, and I'm going to find out from the state if we can link the, um, Excel spreadsheets that we got. I don't know if we can, to the town website, so that way, if a resident is looking to see where their precinct is, and they threw this out or whatever, we have a list that shows which address is in precinct 1 and which is in precinct 2.
So, you've been able to sort residents by address to figure out who's where?
Yeah, we, um, we got the information from the state, and then we reviewed over 1,600, um, addresses to verify that they were in the actual precinct, so, um, we got that done, and they sent us the okay, and so now we're good.
So, if somebody doesn't get a blue slip, they're just precinct 1.
Precinct 1, yeah.
Yeah, but no matter what, they report here for, for voting, and so, um, so the senior center would still, that would be 1, 1 polling place, but then this room would be a second polling place, so.
This is gonna be precinct 1, because it's a smaller population.
Okay.
Um, precinct 2 is bigger, so that's why we chose the senior center, yeah.
Yeah, do you, we need an actual vote for this? Is this just a re?
Gen.
Basically, what you would be voting to do is to authorize this insert to be added to the tax bill.
I make a motion to approve this insert to be added to those taxpayers of residents impacted by the change.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Lucy.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I don't know if you wanna do the caucus warrant.
Yeah, let's just do the warrant for the town caucus.
It's just the warrant for the caucus, April 5th. You just need to approve and sign it.
All right.
So, I.
Are you gonna fix the spelling errors afterwards?
Yeah.
Okay. How's, how's the authority?
Was that in the packet?
I spelled it wrong.
What?
It was in the.
Oh, was it the handwritten?
I was gonna say, I did spell check and edit.
Make a motion to approve the warrant for the annual town caucus, April 5th, 2022, as presented.
Yeah, it's not in your, is it, it's not in their packet, right?
This one isn't?
This one?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's, you may, yeah.
Found the typo? Where?
No, he was joking.
Yeah.
It's a. I'm report part.
Gee, you're getting really detail-oriented here. Okay.
I hope that Ed made a draft of that.
Yeah, we have this, so, this is the, uh, the warrant that talks about, uh, the warrant happening here at, uh, at Town Hall at 7 o'clock on April 5th.
Yeah, I just need one copy, though, signed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably do that as we finish up tonight.
Okay, yeah. Oh, Ed has it, okay.
Yeah, he's got it all, yeah.
So, if you can just.
Right, so this just basically lists all the candidates that are open, and a lot of this has been advertised already out on the
Yes.
Southampton Community Facebook page. It's posted around here, so if anybody is looking, please step up
Yep.
to volunteer to, um, get on the ballot. To volunteer to get on the ballot here and be nominated. You've got papers to fill out before the end of March.
March 29th is the deadline, and we do not have a lot of papers taken out for some of them.
And we have, people have to get 32 signatures minimum?
It's, yeah, we suggest 32. That's the state form. We cannot take, it's 1% of the last governor's race, which was 1767, but we can't take, it has to be, if it's less than 1, if it's less than 20, it has to be 25, over 25, no less than 25 and no more than 50. So that's why the state says 32.
Okay.
And they developed the form because we have gotten nomination papers where people have signed them, and they are not registered voters, and they have to be signed by registered voters, so.
And to be clear, registered voters of Southampton.
Of Southampton, yes.
Registered voters here.
And it's not just local elections that we get that, we get the state ones, too, that are.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we've got lots of positions open. People can check those out, especially multiple positions in the Finance Committee.
PPP.
Yeah, Personal Policy and Procedures School Committee for Hampshire Regional. And Library Trustees are probably the biggest bunch here. Park Commission, a couple as well. And others are like.
Housing is too.
One, but yes, I mean.
I can tell you that Library Trustees, we have gotten papers in, on those, taken out, I mean.
Yeah.
The ones that we have not are PPP and Finance and Park.
All you qualified people out there, step up and come see Lucy and pick up your paperwork so that you can.
And the other thing is people could be nominated at the, and voted in at the caucus.
Right, yes, yep, they can be.
Not have to do the paperwork, I mean.
Well, they can be nominated on the floor, and then if they get enough votes at the caucus, then they can be put on the ballot. They have to accept it, too, so.
All right, so at this point, we're going to be in.
Call for the vote?
Yeah, yeah, yes. I was going to say, we're going to try to approve this warrant for the annual town caucus. We may sign it a little bit later tonight, but could I have a motion to approve the warrant for the annual town caucus?
There's a motion on the floor already.
There was, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All right.
Could I just recommend that we change Chairman to Chair?
Sure. Where's that?
A, at the top.
To elect a chair?
To elect a chair.
To serve at the, at the caucus? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? If there's no discussion, one more thing, at the very bottom, I'm going to say, let's see, no, we got that, okay. Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we will get it signed duly and get it to you.
Chris, Tammy Walunis, 298 College Highway. If anyone is looking for that list, it is featured at the top.
Right.
I found it, I marked it up there, so it's right on the top of the Southampton Community Facebook page.
Right.
Right there with the list.
Yep.
Thank you.
And feel free to reach out and ask anybody about, you know, what, what the position entails. If you don't understand what it's supposed to do, try to find somebody on the existing committees and, you know, we really would appreciate citizens stepping up and volunteering to be on these, on these ballots to be elected. We definitely need lots of input for running the town, and so we'll look forward to lots of papers being taken out and lots of people on the ballot. All right, next, I think we have the Water Superintendent contract coming up here. Is that right? There we are? Okay. All right, so we have before us, excuse me, a personal services agreement between the Town of Southampton Board of Water Commissioners and Thomas J. Goggan, the Water Superintendent. I'll just give a couple of the highlights here, and then I think we would have to ask for, we're looking to basically have a vote.
Vote to support.
To support the, to support the personal services contract, from what I'm understanding, right? So.
Correct, because due to our legal counsel's opinion that the Select Board would have to vote to support or authorize this contract.
Right, okay. So even though the Water Commissioner, the Water Superintendent reports to.
Directly to the Water Commissioners.
Directed by the Water Commissioners, we are simply also putting our signatures on this contract to support it. Okay. So just a couple points, personal services agreement, this is a three-year agreement, retroactive to July 1, 2021, going through June 30, 2024. And just probably the highlights here, just to note that this, the nature of the work of the Water Superintendent is basically an on-call, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. He's available to deal with any emergencies, so this is a very different kind of job with required licenses that he must have to be able to manage our town water situation appropriately. And we have some salaries that have been established here, proposed as the first year, which is ending now, for an annual rate of $95,600. For fiscal '23, which begins in July, the annual rate would be $97,512. And for the third year of the contract, beginning in July of 2023, the compensation would be $99,462. So those are the highlights of the contract. And with that, shall we have some?
I have a question for the, for the Chair of the Water Commission.
Sure, yes, Jim is here, by all means.
Jim Walunis, I'm the Chair of the Water Commission.
Jim, the, the rates that are established in here for compensation, are they all within your existing budget, and will they not result in an increase to tax rate payers?
That is correct.
I'm good.
And were all the other things that were discussed fine?
Yep, everything's good.
Good, good, okay, thanks.
Yeah, and this is basically managed out of the Water Enterprise Fund, is that right?
Yes.
So that's where that is, okay. So does anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we'll take a motion to basically.
I'll make a motion to approve the personal service agreement between the Town of Southampton Board of Water Commissioners and Thomas J. Goggan, Water Superintendent, retro July 1, 2021.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? Anyone? All right, if not, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved.
Thank you.
5-0, very good, okay. And we will get this duly signed, I'm sure, before we leave tonight, or sometime. Ed will find us, and we'll get it signed. Get it to you.
You're going to do the, the Water Pomeroy Letter?
Oh, yes, that's on the agenda next.
It's actually next, it's in here, yeah.
Do you have any questions I can answer?
Perfect, it's actually the very next thing along here. Boy, I, we're just, yes, I love it when people are moving our agenda. This is the quickest 10 minutes we've had. That's great.
I want to go to bed.
Yeah, no, understood, understood. Yeah, so, yeah, let's talk about this. So we have a request for a letter of support for an application for a water supply protection land acquisition grant, and this is on the upper part of Pomeroy Meadow. I believe this was maybe what was referred to as the Courtney property, is that?
The Courtney property, I think we came up with that it was Upper Pomeroy Meadow, we were going to call it.
In terms of the.
The names of the projects are always interesting.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that's what we kind of settled on.
Yeah, so go ahead, Jim, and tell us a little bit about this.
So it was brought to us by the Open Space Committee. Right away, we knew it was a good piece of property for water supply protection. They're looking for us to apply for a state grant to get half of the purchase price. Joe Slattery, who is a Water Commission member and was a former Water Superintendent, who was previously a well driller in the area, provided some details that the water in that area that goes into the ground actually flows directly towards our well. So it's an important piece of property to protect, you know, and it has other benefits besides water. It has, you know, lots of nature and natural heritage species, and it's completely over the Barnes Aquifer, so.
And this is 76 acres.
76 acres, yes.
That's quite a big piece of property.
Just two little pieces of frontage. It's mostly wraps around all those houses on the upper end of Pomeroy Meadow Road, starting at the town line. Has frontage down by the bridge, where there's a barn, there's an old horse barn down there that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like falling apart in the woods. And then it has frontage up, further up near, there's like a brick house and a two-story house. There's some frontage in between there, too. So it would have public access.
Great.
Usually with the water supply grant, we end up having to put in a little parking space and a sign.
Uh huh, yeah. Well, and definitely, this, this was one of the priorities, I think, that was mentioned in terms of priority in the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and also the Master Plan, just in terms of protecting Southampton's water supply. I think that's been noted in various plans that we've done over time, so this, this is very, very timely. It's very great that the family, the residents of the, the owners of the property are considering that, and from what we understood, it was duly, I guess, attributed to the fact that those little brochures got sent out, the postcards got sent out from the Open Space and Recreation Committee in terms of the.
Charlie's stuff, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie McDonald was very instrumental in that in terms of the, the importance of our, of our aquifer. So at this point in time, so this is what, you, you guys are going to be working on this through Kestrel, is that?
Kestrel's doing most of the footwork for us and the, all the complicated stuff. We're just providing the support.
Right.
And CPC really felt that because it was a high priority on the water, that the article that was voted on basically supports it, hopefully they'll get the grant, but the way it was written was it would be supporting it regardless of the grant.
Yeah, they did, they did decide to do that, yeah, so, yeah.
Very good.
We've, we've got a good shot at the grant, though.
Yeah.
Because we've done it before, and the more you do it, the, the more you get it, actually.
Yeah. Well, and it's great that you've got Kestrel helping out, too, because these can be onerous, to say the least, so that's great. And I think at this point, this is just basically a letter of support.
That's for the, the water grant?
Yeah, to go, yeah, to be part of the, the application process, right. So it just, for what it says here, the following persons are authorized to receive funds and implement the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant Program, Tim Godet, Joe Slattery, and James Walunis, Walunis of the Water Commissioners, Ed Gibson, Town Administrator Jennifer Day, Town Treasurer and Collector. And that would be signed by myself as Chair of the Select Board. So all those that are interested, would you like to make a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the Southampton-Pomeroy Meadow Road DWSP Grant Application and to ask the Chair to sign on behalf of the Board.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? If not, could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Bye, Lucy, thank you. Here, Ed, while you're at it. I'll let you put the date in.
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. We'll do this while we're at it. Perfect. Very good, thank you. Okay, very good. All right, moving on. Let's stay with the new business while we're in this category here. ARPA funds application, final application. Rini, you want to take a lead on that, since you were instrumental in this?
Yeah, so I drafted a form for filling out the application, taking, I hope, the best of a few different towns' application, and it's designed as a form fill, so people can just complete it online and then just email it to Ed. And I believe it's done.
Yes, it's been distributed, it's on the website, but I just thought everybody would like to see the final version of it.
Oh, sure.
Right, yep, no, great, so.
Thank you for all your work on it, Rini.
Yeah, exactly. So I think as we agreed at the last meeting, applications are basically due by May 1, 2022, but we're going to start looking at meetings, or, sorry, start looking at applications perhaps as early as, as April 1, or our early April meeting, depending on how this all fits now with our FinCom meetings here, but we'll be starting to look at applications in early April. And if there are funds still remaining, we would be looking possibly at a second round of funding sometime in June.
Okay, but this says that we're going to be reviewing and awarded at the discretion of the Select Board. So before the final due date of May 1, this implies to me that we're going to be awarding. I think that's what we decided, that we're going to be rolling awards.
Reserve the right to do so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be a rolling, rolling admission, yeah.
We've already authorized three different items, so.
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily first come, first served, but I mean, I think we were, you know, I think we wanted to take a look at what's come in at a, at a given meeting and see where we are with things.
Right.
And, you know, if we've got questions, we can always hold off on it, but we wanted to have the ability to, to start awarding if we could, I think. Any further questions about that, Francine? Are you concerned about that?
No, I, you know, I just didn't want to miss a, a great opportunity if something terrific came in and we're out of funds. And if we were to maybe rank them in some kind of priority order would help in the decision-making process, but.
Well, I think we haven't really defined how we're going to review them yet, so that might be a possibility to think about how we would go about, you know, ranking them or scoring them of some sort. We haven't really defined that, so that's a good point.
Yeah, and I know we're not going to allocate all the money out the first time anyway, so.
I think we could come back to that and take a.
I just think that, given the fact that COVID happened and we had to quickly allocate funding, I think it just gives us the ability to do it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Okay, and so those have been sent out, Ed, you said, to the, to various committee chairs, department heads, et cetera?
Yes.
And it's also on the town, town website. So those that are listening, that are interested, that may not have heard about it, please take a look.
And I did send it to Caitlin Swistak-Rooks, the Chair of the Board of Health, because the three things that have been funded.
Right.
Were asking for a paper trail, so retroactively to fill it in.
Yep, correct, yeah. And there will be also one retroactive, I believe, for the, the study over at Hampton Ponds.
Yes.
Right. So, we're going to have to make a long list for Ed for all the applications he's got to fill out here. Many of these applications are going to be sitting in your lap, I'm afraid. Okay. Let's see. Moving on. Closeout of FY '21 financials.
Yes, and that is moving forward. I have a meeting with Lisa later this week to catch up on things, but both Jen and Bradley had mentioned what they had been working on with Lisa to this point in time. What I have is still being out there to be worked on are some line item transfers for the departments for the end of fiscal year '21. Lisa was working with Bobby Jones from the school to go over some of their entries and possible deficits. They did, Lisa confirmed with me today that $12,501 transferred for fiscal year '21 into the school department budget from the CARES Act. So, she was going to take care of that. Let's see. Chapter 90 is complete. The Fund 26 is complete. Still working on some of the receivables and a little school variance, which she had another meeting with Bobby today on that. And then there were a couple of planning board deficits, which maybe just missed entries to the wrong revolving account. And then she had, still has some questions on the water pump project.
So, with the what?
Water pump project.
Water pump. Okay.
Okay. So, it sounds like we're winding down at least on that and.
Yes.
Should be able to get the Schedule A taken care of?
Yes.
And Bradley said we'd be done, he thought, the end of March.
End of March. Yeah, that's what he was saying. Yeah. Okay. And any further questions about that? Any other issues on that? We're certainly looking forward to getting that done, because then that will allow us to deal, we still would have to deal with our free cash certification, right?
Correct.
For FY '21 and have that knowledgeable for our town budget process. So, with that, leading into budget process for FY '23.
Yes, and that's ongoing. And Bradley and I will have a draft budget and estimated revenues to the Board for the next meeting on the 29th. And we'll go through that process, and I look forward to the meetings with the Finance Committee.
I'd just make a comment. If it hasn't already been done, could you just make sure it's on the radar list, Ed, for us to do the recalculation for the enter department, true-up between the Water Department and us?
Oh.
I believe last year, we just kept the placeholder.
I did that. Yes, exactly. So, Bradley found the formulas and whatever, so, yes, we can bring that up to date for both the water and the transfer station enterprise funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, let's finish up with our new business. And the next agenda item is the Town Administrator's Evaluation Process. Let me just give a couple of words of intro here, and we'll kind of go through this for public record. So, we have conducted an evaluation of the Town Administrator's performance for the January '21 to December '21 period. This was started out by having Ed do a self-evaluation, which was shared with the Select Board members. And then each Select Board member scored the evaluation categories individually and provided some supporting narrative for their decisions. And all of that has been shared only with myself. It has not been shared with other members of the committee. I then was tasked and voted at a previous meeting to consolidate the evaluation and do the average scoring. And I chose to go ahead and do that. Did not do any weighting of the scores, even though we do have two members of the Select Board that have only been here for six months, not a full 12 months. We just took the scores as they were, and this has been done to reflect the performance for the entire fiscal year. This was discussed.
Calendar year.
Sorry, calendar year. Thank you. Calendar year, January to December, as I mentioned. And Ed and I had a chance to discuss this last Friday and talk it through, and basically all were in agreement. So, what I would like to do, we'll kind of run down, I had sent people a note in terms of where we'll start here, but I'll just call out your names here. What I'd like you to do is just take, for example, the evaluation category, give the rating, and then just read the narrative that was there to support that. So, let's start with number one, with Joy.
Do you want to go over what the ratings mean, like the one through five?
Sorry. Okay, yeah, right. Ratings, one through five, thank you. Five consistently exceeds expectations. Four is often exceeds expectations. Three is meets expectations. Two occasionally meets expectations, and one rarely meets expectations.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
I just wanted to acknowledge that there aren't that many people that have, do have their evaluation read in front of the general public. I know I've done a lot of evaluations and student evaluations in my career, and I don't think it's ever been on TV. So, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to Ed, who certainly, it's a small town, but the workload, especially with COVID and everything else, always seems to, I'm always amazed at how much business there is, so just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you for that. I was going to come back around to that at the end, but that's fine. That's perfect, actually. I definitely would support that notion of having to do this on a public televised situation. So, Ed, we know this is not the first one you've been through with all your many job hats and responsibilities in the past, so. Joy, so, yeah, just go with number one, job performance, and then the rating for that, and then the narrative in it, in italics.
Sure. Job performance, performs responsibilities as appropriate for the position. Work performance results in consistently high quality and quantity of professional work. The rating was 3.5. Examples, Ed's work performance has often exceeded expectations. He has a high volume of work with multiple and diverse responsibilities. While timely scheduling can be challenging with limited resources and competing priorities, and especially this past year with COVID-19 management considerations and limitations, it is evident that Ed is capable of wearing many hats in his role as Town Administrator, responsible for overall management of town departments and physical facilities, daily operations, procurement, financial accountability, and collective bargaining agreements. This year, he maintained his performance in spite of additional responsibilities with new government funding programs, COVID regulations, and membership on two new ad hoc committees.
Okay. Thanks. And, Rini, I think we can just do the title. I don't know that we need to read all the description of the.
Okay. Job knowledge.
Yeah, just go with the rating and then the example part.
Is 4.2. It's very knowledgeable about municipal procedures, and if unable to answer a question, will point to the proper source for information. His past experience has served him well to be the Town Administrator dealing with various town departments, issues from personnel and budget to contracts and legal compliance. When questioned, he often has the response and is able to defend his position. He certainly understands his job responsibilities and the required procedures of municipal government, although they sometimes limit the creativity needed for problem solving. He maintains his membership and participation in MMA, MA, PPO, and the small.
Oops. Town administrators.
You can just finish it up for me, because I think I'm a little.
Small town administrators group. He's attended multiple online meetings, briefings, and webinars related to the CARES Act, as well as issues brought forth by the Department of Revenue, MIMA, and other state agencies as needed.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Number three, Personnel Management. Rating is three. There were some serious vacancies left open that the town desperately needed, and this likely affected the workload of all Town Hall employees. We went far too long without qualified staff for the accounting office positions, which resulted in excessive spending on accounting personnel. More concerted recruitment effort might have avoided the dilemma which we found ourselves in, as there were too many interim steps before a final solution was achieved. However, Ed is professional, demonstrates integrity, and generally models respectful behavior. He works with the department heads and committee chairs to provide guidance and options for resolving problems they may be facing. He provides options for their consideration, along with his rationale of what results or consequences there might be. COVID has presented its own challenges in the working environment this past year, especially when Town Hall was closed to the public. But Ed has endeavored to keep collegial working relationships among employees. More can be done in terms of helping staff identify training opportunities, so everyone is up to date on aspects of their job. Onboarding of new employees can be given more attention with perhaps a specific team-building session to increase the sense of teamwork. The autonomous culture within Town Hall, employees reporting either to the TA, or to the boards, or to the voters, make this challenging at times. With the new Town Accountant and Assistant Town Accountant in place, Ed has been working with them on the importance of accuracy and the use of best municipal accounting practices in budgeting and reporting. The Select Board encourages this interaction and mentoring. Ed has been delegating more daily responsibilities to his assistant from scheduling Zoom meetings, communicating with vendors, and compiling Select Board's meeting packets five days ahead of a scheduled meeting, allowing for better preparation on our part. Okay. Number four, Francine.
Okay. Fiscal Management. The rating is three. Ed is very good at steering the Select Board towards prudent, fiscally responsible and conservative decisions. However, we continue to request financial packets be prepared that not only show the budget, but all the transfers throughout the year, so that we could look at a single document to access the overall financial health of the town. This is a critical item to address, so that the, so the Select Board can be confident in our financial position at any given time. New financial software may increase efficiency in this area and should be actively researched. During some eight months of calendar year 2021, fiscal management was undoubtedly one of the greatest challenges and source of added stress with delays in closing the books. When both positions in the Accounting Department were vacant, the efforts to put forth multiple simultaneous strategies to advertise and identify an interim solution did not produce results.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner. This ultimately impacted the timely work of the Finance Committee and Select Board in analyzing departmental budget requests and caused delays in establishing a balanced budget for fiscal year '22. This lack of an accounting team necessitated Ed being appointed as interim accountant for several weeks. While a temp agency provided an accountant to assist budget and hours available limited her ability to fully take on all needed responsibilities to produce timely and accurate reports useful for Select Board, Departments, and Committees' decision-making. Two points that Ed noticed and noted in his self-evaluation are the importance of having an internal succession plan and utilizing and expressing benchmarking trends that could help identify the biggest cost drivers in our budgeting process. This would help plan for unanticipated costs. Both actions would be very helpful.
Thanks. John, who do five?
Time Management. Rating 3.3. The work of the Town Administrator requires juggling multiple priorities and responding to unexpected emergencies on any given day. Oftentimes, the planned work for the day gets rearranged due to some unexpected competing need this past year that has been compounded by the advent of two new committees, where Ed is also a voting member. There are times when requests for information have not gotten timely attention, and some committee chairs have been left waiting for answers, particularly on financial issues. Long delays in responding to people are not acceptable. Providing an interim response acknowledging the request would go a long way to satisfy some inquiries he receives either internally or from the public. Ed's ability to effectively prioritize, delegate tasks, or organize his office has improved but still needs his attention. Particularly to this year, there have been significant additional demands on his time, such as requesting and reporting the use of CARES Act funds, and for adhering to six new grant award deadlines. Ed has also been dealing with four construction projects, the largest being the water main relocation on Route 10 and the East Street Bridge construction. We note that Ed often works after hours and on weekends to ensure time-sensitive deadlines are met.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll take on number six, too, and then we'll swap.
Communications, specifically public staff Select Board. Rating is 3.3. Ed is usually courteous in his interactions, tries to keep calm under pressure, and maintains professionalism in meetings with the public. Ed has regularly informed the Select Board about departmental issues, emergency situations in town, and provided written requests to the Chair for any time off. Departmental meetings have been held more regularly to allow various offices to share their current work priorities and raise areas where further assistance or decision is needed. He has facilitated the posting of a variety of items on the town's website to alert and inform residents of events and/or advisories in a timely manner. He has frequently attended various committee meetings to provide guidance on policies/procedures, areas related to mass general law, and possible courses of action. Enhancement to our website and other communication tools will go a long way to improve the dissemination of important information.
Okay. Next, Joy. Swap down there.
Teamwork. Rating three. This has been a stressful year with everyone dealing with the impact of COVID on their lives, and this has contributed to occasional reports of low morale among Town Hall employees. It is not the Town Administrator's sole responsibility to promote morale, but good communication, fostering teamwork, and getting everyone pulling in the same direction can help with motivation and enthusiasm. There may have been a few occasions when the TA could have handled a situation differently, where a tone of discussions did not reflect the best role modeling of professional behavior. Setting expectations/goals for staff and holding them accountable would put him in a stronger leadership position. When problems or queries from town residents are brought to his attention, Ed takes steps to involve the relevant department heads and endeavors to resolve the issue. He himself notes that there have been a handful of times where this was not done as timely as it should have been, but in general, he has handled the situation. Ed actively promotes the town's interests and attends various events after hours, such as the opening of the Cooley Dickinson Urgent Care and Dreamer this past year, as well as Celebrate Southampton.
Okay. Thank you. Number eight, Francine.
Next is Problem Solving, and it's three.
Go ahead.
3.7. Ed is very solution-oriented and is always looking ahead to future problems and overcoming obstacles. He appropriately cautions the Select Board in order that we better understand the consequences of potential decisions. During the past few months, Ed has had to deal with a variety of issues, administrative, legal, and financial. He has reached out to legislators, attorneys, and other municipal and state resources to gather advice, often ahead of time, and shares his findings and recommendations. In general, he has been forthcoming with ideas for proposed solutions for our consideration, and has not hesitated to share his perspective of risk the town might be taking if the Select Board decided on a particular course of action.
Thank you. Number nine, Francine.
Creativity and Initiative. Rating 3.4. Ed has not hesitated to assume the various challenges that occurred this year. He has been receptive to new ways of doing things if they can be beneficial and effective replacements or additions to current ones. He has been working closely with the Technology Committee to get a voice-over internet phone system procured for Town Hall, has taken the initiative to request grant extensions of state authorities when contractors are not able to undertake the work as planned. He was instrumental in proposing a debt exclusion for the Greenway acquisition until such time as the legislature allowed for CPC funds to be used for that purpose, and then gained voter approval to exchange, to exchange the source of funds. This has allowed the town to secure the necessary funds to move forward on acquiring the railroad right-of-way without incurring additional debt. Ed has effectively presented options to the Select Board in its contracting processes and union negotiations. He is working on improving our procurement system by reaching, researching what other towns have done to develop an in-house database of qualified vendors, potentially shortening the often lengthy process. There are still a number of processes that could be updated and made more efficient. Ed has stated his intent to find ways to reduce redundancy in manual steps needed to complete routine tasks and identify more services that we may be able to provide through online methodology. Hopefully, the Cost Efficiency Committee will make some recommendations that will help Ed, the town employees, and citizens.
Okay. Thank you. Number 10, Above and Beyond, in quotes, rating number four, rating, sorry, rating four. No doubt that Ed works his 40-hour week and then some. His lengthy job description comprises a number of administrative, procurement, personnel, and financial management responsibilities, and he's shown knowledge and proficiency in a number of those. Has a strong sense of commitment to his job and to the town. He meets the expectations of volunteering and working outside his normal scope of work. He's willing to help with anything and does take on tasks outside his job description because we don't have sufficient staff for some functions. He makes himself available to employees, committee members, and the public, and is often a resource for them. Ed attends many committee meetings, often scheduled after hours, both to be a resource and to improve communication. He works long hours and is incredibly dedicated to his job. And then lastly, we had some individual goals that were put in the contract for the previous year, and these, basically, there has been, there are 11 of them, from holding department head meetings on a more regular basis that we felt is happening. Perhaps more clarity on agenda items could be useful for the meetings. Minutes are being taken and recorded by an assistant. We wanted that to be more timely, and that has been done. We have an assistant. Ed is not taking the minutes as he was before, most of this, or the early part of last year. So, we have someone doing very detailed minutes for us. They're not always when the time lands, but that's partly because I think we have four hour meetings, and she's very, very thorough with these. Working with a Treasurer and Accountant to provide Select Board and department heads with the most updated revenue and expenditure reports. This is one where we felt, no, this has not been done because of our late closing of the books. Adhere to the current budget process by law for tasks and timetables. This is ongoing. We felt we started this process on schedule for this budget year. Complete one staff evaluation per month. This hasn't been completed monthly as planned. Two have been done, and there are four in progress as of the end of December. Set and adhere to deadline dates for project process points and completion. Mostly, this has been done with a few extensions, a few extensions have been needed. Identify additional tasks to delegate. This has definitely improved quite a bit, working with Ed and his assistant. Working with a Town Accountant, Treasurer Collector, Assessor, Finance Committee, and with individual department heads to identify alternative and cost-saving methods, revenue enhancements. Basically, this was to have recommendations to present to us for the FY '23 budget. This kind of has been usurped, in a way. This has not solely fallen on Ed's shoulders, but it's helpful to have the Cost Efficiency Creative, yeah, Cost Efficiency Committee created, and Ed is a voting member of that Cost Efficiency Committee, so that has been incorporated into a broader thing. And then we'll recommend to the Select Board and Finance Committee alternative ways to have departments and committees present their budget requests in preparation for an October '21 Town Meeting. I'm not sure how we came up with that date, but that's what was in there. We'll work with our Internal Financial Department to review current financial software systems and present some ideas for replacement or an upgrade. And this was to be done by December to have an updated cost, and this hasn't been done in terms of costing yet, but contact has been made with vendors, and the intent is to hope this is, yeah, the intent is to secure this for FY '23, possibly through ARPA Funds. Work with the new ad tech committee and Select Board to improve our information network, and basically identify grant opportunities, other funding sources, to deliver these improvements and delegate IT upgrades troubleshooting to the ad hoc Technology Committee. This has definitely been worked on quite a bit. There's been the voice-over IP acquisition process going on, the Community Compact IT focus on cybersecurity improvements at Town Hall, and cybersecurity training of our town employees. So, all of that has been very, very much worked on. And then lastly, work with the Town Accountant, Treasurer Collector, and Assessor to identify estimated revenue receipt timelines to be able to match large department expenditures, expenditures such as capital projects and one-time annual payments to receive the most available discounts or early on, for early on time, sorry, for early one-time payments without requiring short-term borrowing due to expenses exceeding revenues. And this is pending. I think there's been some progress on that, but there's more that Ed is going to be exploring on that. So, overall, when we added all the scores together and averaged the scores divided by all of us, the overall score is 3.4. And that concludes the process for this year. And Ed, I would like to just turn it over to you. You have the opportunity to share any thoughts and comments with us, if you would like to.
No, thank you. My voice is failing with this cold, so I appreciate, and it's always not an easy, and it's almost a painful process to go through with the public piece. Again, thank you for your considerations and your comments. Appreciate it.
Good. Well, and thank you too. I mean, I agree with you that this is an uncomfortable process on all parties and all sides, and we thank you for your patience in going through all of this, and I think we've had some good communication and good discussion about this and look forward to the next few months and things that we can get done together. So thank you very much for all your time and effort, and I know there are many hours, not only on Select Board nights, but many nights that I'm in meetings with you too, but many others that I'm not in meetings with you that I know you're attending many meetings, so this is definitely more than a 40-hour job, and we really appreciate your commitment to the town.
You're welcome.
To us all. Thank you very much. Okay. Shall we go back just briefly on the old business? Is there anything to talk about on COVID-19 updates, offhand?
No, cases are still drafting. Hospitalizations are drafting also, slower than the regular cases, but they are going down, so, yeah. We're cautiously optimistic at this point.
Yeah, okay. CARES Act update.
Actually, Lisa was working with the schools on some of those CARE Act, shall we say, I won't say transfers, but journal entries, so that they would definitely be captured, and I'm putting my information together to do my end of the CARES Act report at the end of the month.
Okay, very good. All right. And then East Street Bridge update.
East Street Bridge is still continuing to move forward, basically on time and pretty much on budget. We've had a few extra change orders along the way, but we're, like I say, we're still within our budget. I know we have to meet out there with the contractor in the next couple of days because they're at a point where they have to delineate where the riprap will need to be placed by the two abutments, so that's one thing that they wanted the town to look at along the way, so.
Okay. All right. And then rapid test kits update.
We do still have some rapid test kits left. I know that the Select Board had reached out to the Board of Health to see if they had any other recommendations for the next places where they might go, so we'll look to hear back from them and keep distributing them.
Yeah. I know it'd be good to actually get these distributed rather than taking up space in your limited office.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be not walking around them.
But, yeah, really, thoughts?
Last time I had offered to distribute them, get them up to Hampshire, did that happen? I didn't.
It hasn't, as of yet, and I have to double-check on the contact at Hampshire that, it's not Jennifer.
Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Yeah, okay.
It was recommended.
And there was another place, too, that you were waiting to.
Smithville.
Smithville.
What's that?
Be working with Cam?
No, I was actually asking, gonna see if Stephanie had a contact there if she might recommend contacting.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can at least get those school ones out for sure. That was like around 50 or so, I think. It wasn't a lot.
Yeah, 20, yeah, 50, so I figured 25 each.
Yeah, at least, yeah.
And we do have two nurse interns still working out of the COAs, so if they can do anything to help, they'll be back. This is spring break week, but next week they'll be back on Wednesdays, so if there's something that they can do, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, good. Get them, yeah, we'd like people to, you know, have access to them and have them handy, at least to have one per family or something at home, so that if you need it, all of a sudden, you don't have to go out looking for it, you know, so. We'll try and get those distributed since we've purchased them, and we don't want them to expire.
And I think at one point, if we get to the point where we have a lot left and we've given them out to all the different places, I mean, I think we should put together an effort to have a drive-by pickup, you know, whether it be at the transfer station on a Saturday or something, but there are kids that need community service. I mean, we could do something, but we certainly don't want any leftover.
Absolutely not.
Yep, okay. All right. And then the last thing on the agenda there was the, just an update on the voice-over IP.
Yeah, it's, the proposal's been signed and back to them. I'm working with the vendor now to get them further information on the phone numbers and where the locations will be, so.
And remind me, is this, the phones are gonna be, is this gonna be another ARPA funding on the phones, or did we take this out of the, we had this in the technology budget, maybe in the main?
I think so.
Main budget? Maybe we might have, yeah, I forget. Okay, somewhere.
I think there will be cost savings, too. I, wait.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back and.
Yeah, I forget where the source.
Pretty sure it was already in the budget.
Yeah, we might have already taken that from the budget rather than.
I think, I think the lease cost comes, or the, I say, we'll say the operating monthly cost comes from the budget. I think we may have taken the actual cost of the phones themselves to purchase from the ARPA funds. I'll go back and double-check on that.
Just so that we.
I'm at a disadvantage tonight.
Yeah, be sure that we've got all those.
With this cold, my head is just.
Yeah, no, just to be sure that we.
Very foggy.
Have all the dots lined up on that one. Okay. All right, let's skip on down. We don't have any signatures.
Can I go back to the, any other necessary business?
I'm sorry, yes.
That can't wait?
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a couple of things.
Yep.
First of all, it came up today about the infrastructure bill, and I don't know if you're all getting the Beacon, but this was a document that, I don't know if everybody got a chance to see it, but this is the, it's on competitive infrastructure funding opportunities for local governments, and it was published in the last Beacon magazine, if anybody, if you didn't get a chance to see that, I certainly can, I don't know, I think I must have it electronically.
Yeah, no, I'm sure we all get it electronically.
Okay, all right. The other thing, the cemetery mentioned about Memorial Day, and we haven't had a Memorial Day for the last, you know, in town.
We should be able to this year.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that that's on people's radar, and we do have, I think, only $200 in the budget, and I think in the past, we've bought flowers from our own farms in town, and I just wanted to make sure that we bring in the right people, Jerry and some other people, to plan that. I know the American Legion has been involved.
American Legion's.
So we can put that on an upcoming agenda. That would be great.
Good thing.
And just two other things. One is, are we talking tonight about Clearwater Woodland and the Boundary?
Yes, coming up.
Is that under, on a separate budget item?
No, it's under pending items.
It's under pending.
It is, okay, then I'll bring that up then.
Coming up, pretty soon.
And lastly, we've mentioned a couple of times about the ARPA funds and application, and we also have said a couple of times, if it qualifies, if it qualifies, that sort of thing. And I know we talked about the possibility of taking the entire 1.8 million and making it as lost revenue, and then we can do anything we want. John brought up a very interesting possibility of the pension liability, and I just think we should have a little bit more conversation about that.
Okay, very good, yeah. Yeah, we probably ought to put that one back on the schedule to look at.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, thanks.
And I will just mention in your packet, not for discussion, but just information. I managed to get some information from South Hadley, so you can see what they've been doing, and they've done, they've done a hodgepodge. They've taken it from all over the place, but the kinds of things that they've been looking at.
And no premium pay.
Right. They haven't voted on any premium pay.
I'm surprised about that.
I was very surprised at that.
What, my takeaway without getting into all minutia on South Hadley one is, I thought the first two pages, and then you got into all the details, but the part, the byte, the graph, and that, I think that that is something that we should steal from them.
I agree.
As the one pager out to the public.
I agree.
Yeah.
Very simple forms.
Once we get things going, yeah.
Here's how much came in, how we've been doing, how we're tracking it.
Absolutely, I totally agree with that.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay.
And then, I just wonder about the ARPA. I don't disagree with anything Maureen said, but I wonder if putting that back on the agenda, does it make sense to try and grab 10 minutes or so when we hold the joint meeting with Finance? Kind of let them know what we're thinking or nothing, or what the options are, and maybe see if they want to weigh in or not? I don't know.
I would be supportive of that. I mean, let's get some finance heads in the game here. Sure, why not?
Yeah, and hear what their priorities.
Talk about what the options are and, you know, what are the pros and cons, because I don't have a good sense of how impactful that could be, but it sounds like it might have some return for us there, so. Okay, good, thanks, Rini, those are good suggestions. Okay, so then moving on. Nothing for signatures, no licenses or permits, no warrants. We do have to re-sign the, or sign the charge, rather, for the Public Safety Building Committee? I don't know if you have that yet or not yet.
No, I do not. I have not had a chance to go back and review that actual wording for the motion to finish it up.
Right, so, but they've had their first meeting, so they know kind of what they're doing?
Yes.
All right. Minutes to approve. We have one set for January 18th. I think there's a couple of things that I noticed, but if anybody has some thoughts on there. So let me just report on one. Ed, on the second page, under your reports, the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, the name is not Novus, N-O-V-I-S, but it's N-O-V-U-S Insight, I-N-S-I-G-H-T, so Novus Insight. Then they will make a site visit, S-I-T-E. So that, I think she just.
Insight, S-I-T-E?
No, Novus Insight is I-N-S-I-G-H-T, so that's their full name, is Novus, N-O-V-U-S, but then it says Novus, so Novus Insight will make a site visit, and that site there should be S-I-T-E.
S-I-T-E.
S-I-T-E, yeah, okay. All right. And then one other one down toward the bottom of this first page, second page, under Select Board, under Francine's report, about three or four sentences down, it says teacher, should be teacher morale.
Morale, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all I found offhand. Anybody else have any thoughts that you mentioned here? Well, I'm looking, let's see. Actually, I do have one more, sorry. Last page, pending items, and it's related to what Rini just mentioned, under the Clearwater Woodland Boundary. So Maureen Groden and Cindy Palmer hiked out to the Boundary and found the fence, but it was hard to find the Boundary. So I think maybe hiked out to the property and found the fence, but it was hard to find the Boundary. So I would just change, hiked out to the property.
And Ed was there too, by the way.
And, yeah, 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 it reported that he, yeah, he, Maureen Groden and Cindy Palmer, right. So just change that first boundary to property, and then it makes sense, I think.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I saw, guys. Okay, anything else? All right.
Motion to approve them as amended.
Thank you, okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right, and then pending items. Okay, Old Town Hall, anything at all from?
No.
Those guys? We really need to.
Still standing.
Yeah, I know, but we were hoping to get some information back from that Hill and Associates, because we wanted to put something on the town warrant for funds to be able to do the first bit of work on that, or something, a scope of work at least, so.
I'll call them tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we got to get them on the stick here. FY21 audit process, I think we had some thoughts about that. I don't know that we're ready to discuss it tonight in terms of whether we do a one-year and then, you know, go out for bid on, or go out for requests or proposals, rather, on a three-year. I know we were concerned about the cost of, that was being put forward to us by Melanson. We can have a two-second thought about it, but then maybe we bring it back for further discussion next time.
Well, I, if we do the one-year at 31 or whatever it is, 30-something, 36, it's above the budget line item that we have.
Correct.
So we couldn't take that vote until May 1st, after we identified line items to transfer the funds.
Right.
Right?
That's right, yeah.
And then, if we do the three-year, technically.
We're in violation.
We're in violation of the bylaw.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So I almost think our hands are tied until May 1st.
Okay, all right. Well, and we may need to then, we didn't pick it up, I think, at the bylaw committee, but we probably make, we're gonna, we need to do that on the next.
We're gonna do that for Town Meeting, just change that one to three.
Okay, in terms of the years.
Another option is that is looking for another company.
Oh, just, just by virtue of the bylaw.
It doesn't jack up the.
Right, but the bylaw itself is wrong in terms of the amount of years that we can have a contract, so that needs to be changed.
I would like to see, other than, I mean, what justification, other than the fact that we've hired someone to clean up 21? Hopefully, that will not be such an imposing job for them to do, so for them to go off $15,000, I would really like to hear a real explanation for that.
I would, too. And then jump back down to year two and three? It doesn't make sense. I think it's, I think.
Could we ask them for something in writing?
Sure.
Get a written proposal, or written comments or proposal, whatever, back from them?
Is there anything in writing?
No, yeah, I think I haven't seen anything, so.
Not formally.
Yeah, let's see if we can have, you know, clarity in terms of the one-year cost with the knowledge of who we've, you know, what effort we've put into trying to get the ship righted around here and get things correct. Not to say that they don't have different priorities and processes in terms of how they look at what needs to be done for our books versus what probably Lisa and Kincher were doing, but hopefully, they aren't too far apart in terms of best practices in accounting.
Does it make, would it make any difference to allow the two to talk to each other? Or for Lisa to provide some sort of?
They already have.
An update?
They already have.
Already have.
So in theory, they're aware.
Lisa's gotten information from Tanya.
Yeah, so in theory, they're aware of the progress we're making and success.
Okay. All right, well, let's see if we can get something from them in writing so that we can understand better what the costing rationale is for such a huge jump, and at least, if we can get the one-year cost, and then, I guess we may as well get, well, we would want to go out for, I thought we said we wanted to go out to look at other companies for a three-year bid, and that Melanson could certainly join in on a bid, but we were kind of wanting to model competitive behavior, I think.
For having secured auditing services in the past, having somebody come in for a one-year is going to be more expensive than a three-year.
That's true, too.
I still kind of like the fourth idea of, we just ask the town at the May meeting to exempt us from the one-year audit.
And just aim for a three-year?
No, no, just, we're not going to audit those books, because they're doing it right now.
Twenty-one.
Because there's the bylaw that requires the audit.
Right.
That's also tying our hands.
Okay.
But I guess the concern is if fiscal year 21 is the one we skip, which was the one that we've had the most challenges, I'm not so sure that that would go over well with people, and, you know, it may or may not uncover anything.
Kintridge, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Kincherf.
Kincherf could give us a financial review, which is two steps below an audit.
That's interesting.
You know, review the financial statements that they're preparing.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Okay, well, let's.
Do you know who other towns is? Every town using Melanson or Kincher? I mean, there must be other places.
The Hilltowns use a place out of Pittsfield, and I can see his face, but I can't.
Scanlon is the other one.
Yeah.
He's around here, right? Isn't he up in the Northampton area?
What about Hadley, Hatfields?
I was doing some of the Hilltowns when I was out there.
But, I mean, there is a CPA firm in Pittsfield, they did Chester.
I think we should, you know, I think jumping up that kind of amount is unacceptable to me.
Well, maybe we do two things at the same time. So we go back and see if we can get from them the costing for both a one-year and a three-year, but at the same time, look for other, other companies so that we can, if we decide to go out for bid, once we get things righted around with money available things righted around with money available and our bylaw language, then we can move forward with that, okay? All right, next is the Clearwater Woodland Boundary Update, and what we have in our packet is a license agreement, which is.
Yes.
Quite lengthy here.
Since Kestrel was amendable to the process, but wanted some way to make sure that it got followed through, they would like something on file with the registry, in the Registry of Deeds, which a license agreement would do, so this is what Katie came back with for her recommendation to us.
You know, the reason I wanted to bring this up is because, you know, I voted in favor of this, I walked the boundary, we want to have good relations with this neighbor, I think the open space has, you know, obviously been very interested in if they're ever selling, that we want to have a good relationship with them, but after reading this document, and, you know, how much does it cost for us to have KP, you know, review or draft this? They're basically on our property, and they have a fence that's someplace is falling down. Now we have to have all these agreements about liability and insurance, and they can, you know, just after reading it all, it just makes me wonder if I still support doing it this way, or if I basically say, move your fence. Really, really? How much have we already spent on this?
I don't know, Ed, what's been the discussion with KP Law, and why did they decide to go in this direction rather than, I thought it was going to be originally just a kind of a letter, not anything.
Well, like I say, when Kestrel chimed in and said that they wanted something.
To go with the deed.
To, yeah, to be filed with the Registry of Deeds, just as a tickler, so that, you know, if someone, if they did sell it or transfer the property and that whoever went in, and they weren't going to take care of the fence, that there's a tickler when the next person that purchases it or whatever goes to record the deed.
Seems like an awful lot of work when, you know, we just purchased this property and determined what the problem was, and now we're doing all the work, you know, to protect ourselves, and, I don't know, it just feels like, when I saw it all in writing at this level, it just felt.
It is, it is pretty, pretty detailed and pretty, not necessarily complex, but there's a lot more to it than I would have estimated, I guess.
This was short to me, guys.
Does it really? From the lawyer, right? And we don't really have an idea whether Hoyok Beagle would be even amended.
That's what I was wondering, like, have they even seen it?
If they're not, they're gonna have to move the fence.
Yeah.
Have you had any conversations with them about this?
No.
No.
Well, maybe you ought to start by having a conversation with them.
I'll be up there Saturday for their St. Patrick's Day dinner, and I can talk to Robert Kane. I can, you know, if you guys want, I can share this with him.
I'm not sure if that's the right venue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, I wouldn't doubt that. Yeah. Where's my corned beef?
Over a green beer, no, I don't think so, but anyway. Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you might want to just let him know that we're working on some paperwork that will be coming their way, but I, you know.
I think he's anticipating something.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I'd prefer frankly, Ed, to make it more official.
Yeah.
He's the one that walked the boundary with us, and.
Okay.
And then Mr. Kane are very good friends, acquaintances from long days gone.
Oh, yeah?
All right, so at this point, though, do we want to go ahead and vote to accept this and sign this so that it can be put forward to them?
Oh, did Conservation Commission see this, too?
No, they have not.
No, they haven't. I wouldn't, I don't want to vote on it yet, without the Beagle Club even looking at it. I don't know.
Or at least a conversation with the Beagle Club.
Yeah, there should be a conversation.
All right, all right, so let's hold off on this, I'm hearing that.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to Joy's point, I mean, do we want to just to formalize the record that we're asking the town administrator?
Yeah.
To reach out and have a conversation with the representative of the Beagle Club, and then simultaneously, do you, do you want it shared with Conservation Commission?
Yes, I will be sharing it with them.
You know, and.
They're very aware of it, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, no, yeah, they were, they were totally part of this, yeah.
Yeah, they were part of it.
Yeah, they haven't seen this final legal language, that's all, but, okay, so shall we have a motion to that effect?
Don't move.
Is that all right with you?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So the motion was to authorize Ed to call.
Ed to reach out.
Legal Club.
To the Beagle Club.
And say that one option is this, or you can just move the fence.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure.
And actually share this draft, this draft license agreement with them, right, yeah. Okay, lastly, let's see, what else have we got here? Charter building on former road still, never any real motion.
Can we just seize that building by eminent domain?
I know, yeah, we gotta, at some point, we just.
Just kind of take it?
Need to just take it down and be done with this thing. What do we do with a charter building? How do we get the, this has been on pending for.
I don't think they've emptied it out yet. I can write back to them and just say, no, we don't want it, just, when you clear out your stuff, get rid of it, too.
Yeah.
Probably easier.
Did I hear somewhere, or did I dream this, that they were actually building another structure? No? Did Randall mention that at any point, that they were, okay?
Hope not.
Not now, or?
Hope not.
There'd be a tax on that building, right?
That's quite a drain.
Yeah, really. Well, let's, let's get this off of our pending, this has been on pending for God knows how many months, years.
Well, we're going to have someone from Charter to come and talk to us, because it's the number one thing that people, broadband was number one, and it's the number one concern about people in town.
Yeah, I know.
We have to have someone come and talk to us about Charter, but that person may not know anything about this particular. And we can't leave 130-something thousand dollars on the table with the Doers Green Communities grant, so we have to do the work to figure out how our cost savings are going along.
Yeah, and the one big thing that Ed had brought forth at the Cost Efficiency